So, all right, we have started. So, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Cape Elizabeth School Board meeting Tuesday, July 28, 2020, at 6:30. It's our regular business meeting via Zoom video conferencing. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I'm going to use Donna's beautiful flag.
Can you see it?
I can see it. It's in shadow, but I see it. It's beautiful. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So, first off, I just want to say, like, a little piece. I can't, I can't see everybody's hand raising. So, especially, I think this is more to the board members. It's not, all your faces are not right here for me to see you raising your hands. So, if at any time a board member needs to speak or has something to say, I'm going to invite you not to necessarily be called on like we typically are, since we are up to 88 participants right now. And I'll, you know, give some time and space, but just chime in. You'll have to, because I won't be able to see hands raised. I won't be able to scroll down, and I'm sure I'll miss somebody. So, please speak up when need be. So, the first item is adjustments to the agenda. And I want to see school board members. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay. I have one potential adjustment to the agenda, which is, we often start with public comments on, right after this. And my adjustment is a suggestion, and I want to hear from the other school board members how you feel about that. I might do an impartial roll call. Donna and I were speaking, thinking that many of the questions could very well be answered in the presentation and the information tonight. So, I am wondering if for tonight's meeting, because there are so many participants, and we have a lot to get through, and that some of the answers, as I just mentioned, might be answered within, from the administrators and Superintendent Wolfram, that we wait for comments till afterwards. And that way, we can, we can hear as much as we need to hear from everybody. I'm curious about thoughts. I'm not wedded to that idea. We were just thinking that might be efficient. So, maybe I'll start with Kimberly. Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I think that's an excellent idea. I think, you know, just from the letters that we've received, a lot of the comments and ideas and questions seem like they may be duplicates in the presentation, hopefully will answer a lot of those questions.
Okay, so you're okay with that idea. Elizabeth?
I think it's a great idea to have comments come. But we do have different action items. And so, we would want to invite comment probably after somebody has made the motion, but before we vote. I'm just putting a procedural thought out there.
Okay. Let, I'm okay with that. And if somehow I missed that, because it's not traditional, please help me and touch me on that. And then, the majority of the comments can be done after. Yeah. Sounds good. I like that suggestion. Hope, where do you stand?
I agree with the suggestion. I'm sorry, I was finding the mute button. That sounds good to me.
Okay. Great. And Nasser? I just saw you. There you are. Are you okay with the suggestion of holding comments?
I am, as long as we're not breaking too many rules. And I would like to add for the fact that if there are dying questions out there, and because we would like to oblige them, they can actually type it in in the chat to be shared with everyone, or just with you, or somebody else, too. So, that might help.
Yes. And I think Elizabeth's suggestion of hearing comments before the vote makes sure that the comments are heard and they, they hold value. And then, they're not done at the end. That's a great point, Elizabeth, once we've already voted, because then, then it's not as powerful. Absolutely. Okay, so, thank you. Who's next? Laura, are you okay with that?
Yes, I agree with the plan.
Thank you. And Phil?
Yeah, I agree. I just want to clarify. I think you mean, are you, do you mean move it to the, after the consideration to approve the plan for fall reopening of school and before the review of the policies?
Yeah, so I think now what it will be is that there will be multiple opportunities for comment, but they will be specific to the action item. So, yes, for item A, when we're talking about calendar, if people want to comment on that action item before we vote, we'll open it up to public comment.
That sounds great. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Fantastic. Then, let's begin, since we're going to get to comments in the public and move on to new business. May I have a motion, please? And just speak up, because I can't see hands. I'm not going to call on you.
I move, we approve the calendar changes proposal for school year '21.
Can I have a second?
Second. It's Laura.
Thank you, Laura. Discussion. Donna, can you speak a little bit to the proposed calendar changes and explain why we're coming back to the calendar for the public and school board members?
I'm going to try to share my calendar.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So, in light of all of the many changes that we're experiencing and going to experience this year, we talked about changing the calendar. And this was discussed at A-Team meetings and also with the district planning team. And this is what we came up with. Originally, we had, on October 9th and March 12th, we had professional development days, where there was no school for students, but teachers came. And those were all-day professional development experiences. And we really felt like we needed to move those to the beginning of the year and have, instead of just three days of professional development and opportunities for teachers to plan and work in their rooms, to have the whole week. We knew that we were going to need many changes, many trainings, some of them to deal with technology, some of them to deal with disinfecting and sanitizing and procedures in the different schools based on what's happening at the time. So, we changed those two professional development days to have a full week of professional development from the 28th to, from the 24th to the 28th of August. This created two extra days for teachers and their contracts. So, we took the days, we added vacation days on December 21st and 22nd, giving our schools rest for a complete two weeks. And our custodians and maintenance people would have time to get, really get into the schools and make any changes and do deep cleanings. So, we extended the Christmas, the winter, December vacation to those two extra days. We also had some, I believe it was sixth PD, what we call PD Wednesdays, where we had changed the calendar a bit this year, so that the PD Wednesdays were a full half day. And we just, we, we moved to those, we, to Fridays, because I shall hear later in our plans, we didn't want to interrupt students who would be going to school Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, and possibly half a day on Friday. So, we moved all of those PD Wednesdays to PD Fridays and kind of spread them out evenly throughout the year. So, we had many discussions on this. And this is, was the recommendation from both A-Team and from the district planning committee.
Okay. Can I have comments from school board members first? Or questions that you might have? Okay. Nasser?
Yeah, is it too late to add other holidays on this, or no?
We don't actually, well, we have, we have national holidays, but we don't have any other holidays in here. So, because the space is so small, I think if you look at that, Nasser, it's only the national holidays that are in here.
So, there are no religious holidays written right into this?
To Nasser's point, I think that if you look at the district calendar, which is different from this calendar, which is, we really use, the district calendar is used for scheduling events and that sort of thing. We typically do have major world religious holidays on that calendar. And I think, you know, we just want to make sure we do.
Yep.
I do need to say, too, that Jason is in the process of talking with his kindergarten staff. And right now, the first day of kindergarten is slated for September 3rd. You know, typically, we have the kindergarten students come in and do screenings that first week and meet the teacher and those things. So, he did want to try to plan with them something like that. So, that 3rd, September 3rd, for the first day of K, may be shifting, just to put that out there. They have not made the plans for that yet, so.
Okay. Are there comments from the public? I think, actually, if you raise your hand, not physically, but on Zoom, I think you jump to the top of the list, and I see that hand raised, and I can call on you. So, if you would like to raise your hand and comment.
Heather, this is Phil while you're waiting to see if a public member wants to comment. Just, just to clarify, it does, looks like the same number of student days here, 175. So, there was just a movement a bit from the beginning to the, because of the winter holiday.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think something that I would like to comment is that it may seem like a long December holiday, but we have had that length of a December holiday before. So, it's not unusual. It has happened. And it might be a nice break for like a two-week chunk to deal with things if need be.
Okay. So, I am not seeing any hands raised. And I'm not hearing any comments. So, I think we will go ahead with the vote. Heather Altenberg is a yay. Kimberly Carr? How do we raise hands? Yay. Phil Sossier?
Yay.
Elizabeth Seifreis?
Yay.
Nasser Sheer?
Yay.
Hope Straw?
Yay.
And Laura Donino?
Yay.
Okay. Before we move on, I just, this technology, I just want to be clear, because I want everybody to feel like they're, they're heard. There was a question, how do we raise the hands? There's a button in the participants' window. Go into reactions at the bottom of your screen. There's a reactions button to click at the bottom. So, Laura, I know we just voted, and I apologize about that. Would you like to still speak? It says that you have a comment under group chat.
So, me, Lauren Tarantino?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to figure out how to do it. My comment is just about aligning our, and I, I think this will probably come up later, but aligning our school days with neighboring districts. For those of us that have children that attend school in other districts. So, to, I know that other school districts are not having students on Wednesdays. And so, hearing that, that's going to be, I didn't know that would be coming up so early with the calendar, but I just wanted to put that out there as something that I think could be important to talk about.
Thank you for that comment. Donna, do you want to speak to that? Because I know we've had conversations around that, and you have been speaking with other superintendents in other districts.
I meet with the Cumberland County Superintendent every Wednesday afternoon. And South Portland, Portland, and Falmouth are going with Wednesdays. We first agreed that everyone would go with Friday, and then they kind of veered off. But I believe everybody else in the area is going with Fridays. So, so there are some other districts that are going with Fridays.
So, I, I think in the ideal world, it would be nice if every district had the same calendar. But I, I think we're as close as we can be. Is that correct, Donna, having had conversations and trying to align?
We tried. But we'll talk about that when I get into the, the plan.
Okay. Okay. So, next agenda item, B, may I have a motion? And again, please just speak up, a board member.
I move, we approve the plan for fall reopening of school.
I have a second.
Second, it's Laura.
Thank you, Laura. Yep, I can see you. And so, discussion. I think this is all you, Donna, yes?
Okay, here I go, trying to share my screen again. Bear with me. See if this works. Yes.
Got it.
Okay. Here we go. So, I just want to start by saying that, you know, we really want to get our students and staff back to school, but we know that we need to get them back to school safely. And those are our two priorities, getting students and staff back to school and getting them back to school safely. So, every group that has worked on this plan has had these two concerns at the top of our lists. If we could bring everyone back, knowing that we're following all the guidelines for safety, we would do that. But we don't have the space. And even if we did have the funding to double our staff, we don't have the capacity to hire all those people at this point. And there would likely not be enough certified teachers available. And just so everyone knows, I've had many suggestions about putting aides in classrooms. And we do, we're still working under the teacher certification statutes. So, we, we do need to teach our students with certified teachers. We've brainstormed and discussed so many possibilities, and then made decisions based on whether they can work in our schools, based on the opinions, knowledge, and research of the experts who know our students, who know our buildings, and who know our staff. I hope that through this presentation, I can address some of your many questions. But there, at this time, we are still very much in the planning stages, and we don't have all the answers. We do know that we need to be flexible as we address our many needs. So, let me see if I can get this into presentation mode. Okay. Okay, everybody see that?
Yes.
Move the people aside here. On July 21st, 2020, we were given guidance from the Department of Education in their framework for returning to classroom discussion. This leveling system is based on a red, yellow, and green categorization. Assignment to the various levels will be provided by the main Department of Education and the main CDC based on scientific data regarding the spread of COVID-19 by county. We expect the first day to be, to be released to us on July 31st. So, they have categories categorized red, suggesting that the county has a high risk of COVID-19 spread, and that in-person instruction should not be conducted. Categorization as yellow suggests that the county has an elevated risk of COVID-19 spread, and the hybrid instruction model should be adopted. And categorization as green suggests that the county has a relatively low COVID-19 risk, and that in-person instruction can be adopted. Although, an SAU, school administrative unit, may opt for hybrid instruction if its buildings or readiness make adhering to this required safety, health and safety measures for all schools are challenged. So, that's what we were given by the state. And why can't I? Oops. Sorry about this. Oh, it just went to the end. All right, here we go. Another item of guidance from the state is that we offer students and families the option to choose remote learning for an agreed-upon period of time. We received common expectations for hybrid and remote learning models, recommending that we develop three plans for the fall, returning to in-person instruction with health and safety guidelines in place for all students, where there was low risk of COVID-19. And then, the second one is a hybrid instruction plan. And the third plan that they suggest that we have is a remote learning plan. An explanation of the goal for a hybrid model is to reduce the numbers of students and staff in one place at the same time when there is moderate risk of transmission of COVID-19. The goal of a fully remote plan is to mitigate the impact when community health metrics indicate a high level of risk. So, we will be offering, assuming that we are going into the yellow, which, that's just an assumption at this point. But if we were in yellow, would we, we would be offering a remote learning situation for an agreed-upon period of time in order to meet the needs of high-risk families and students. We would be offering families this option for at least the first semester. And then, we would reevaluate our situation and move forward from there. It would be necessary to commit to a fall semester of remote learning in order to determine the number of staff needed and to match students and teachers. And we are in the process of working on that right now. Here we go again. It's not moving. Oh, there we go. It is jumping all over. I am really sorry about this. I'm not supposed to do this. I'm going to move this up here and see if I can make it go. No, it's not going to go. And I'm just going to go to the slide. So, um, talking about the work that's been done. Here we go. The timeline of the work that's been done to date. So, in May, and this continues, the Cape Elizabeth School District Administrative Team has gone through an examination of student needs and family needs and teacher needs, main CDC guidelines, main DOE guidelines, and developed a draft district plan. On, from June 26th to July 16th, six meetings of the district planning team were held to review the calendar changes and the suggested draft district plan, which is above, to discuss and develop district procedures as recommended, recommendations to the school board, including methods of communication to staff and family. Those, those meetings were videotaped and were posted. I know that many of you watched them, and that was great to hear your comments on those. The first meeting was an hour long, and the other five meetings were each an hour and a half long. So, they were, they were deep meetings with lots of work being done by everything, everybody. And then, here we are to July 28th, and with the school board meeting to review the recommendations. So, this is the work that each of those teams did. The administrative teams researched possible scenarios and plans to determine what was doable in their departments, schools, and areas. We examined the needs of students, staff, and parents, the guidelines and recommendations, and the capacity of the district to meet the guidelines. Then, we took the calendar and the plans for the three levels to the district planning team, and there was lots of discussion about that, as some of you watched. Decisions were made for district protocols. We talked about screenings. We talked about mask wearing, many things. And we also examined, we examined directives from the state. Now, we're in the process of school staff meeting. And they are working on school plans, as well as the nutrition staff is meeting. Technology teams are meeting, and transportation and maintenance are meeting. So, everybody's working on their own individual areas at this point. The A-Team continues to meet at least once a week to share plans so far and discuss needs and next steps. So, I, what I found out, it just takes a while to go to the next slide. So, the, the district planning team did develop a recommendation, which I would love to read to you. And here's the recommendation. The district planning team and the Cape Elizabeth Administrative Team recommend the following pandemic plan for reopening schools to the Cape Elizabeth School Board. This plan complies with the CD, main CDC and MDOE guidelines and recommendations, and may move from color to color based on data released by the main Department of Education and the CDC. School planning teams will develop detailed plans within this framework for their schools. The employee handbook and the parent-student handbook will be revised as needed based on changes in main CDC and main Department of Education guidelines. And we're working on those guidelines at this point. I'm trying to get it to go to the next slide. All right, I'm going to go back and start. Sorry. Okay, we're gonna try it this way. Seems like I can, no, I can't get it to move in that way either. There we go. Well, I think this is good, good as it gets, so we'll go this way. So this is something that the district planning team worked on. I have rearranged the colors so that they can coincide with the state document that I showed you earlier with the red first, then the yellow, and then the green. So the level red would result in 100% of our students learning remotely with the implementation of a remote learning schedule by each of the schools. There would be a consistent set of expectations regarding instruction, support, grading, and attendance throughout the district with variations based on the developmental level of students at different grades. The level yellow would be the hybrid model, which would be a combination of in-school and remote learning with CDC guidelines implemented. And we know that the CDC guidelines, main CDC guidelines often change. Right now, we are working on plans for a maroon-gold schedule with maroon consistently attending school on maroon students on Mondays and Wednesdays. And students who are in the gold would be attending school on Tuesdays and Thursdays, with gold and maroon attending every other Friday morning. That would leave teachers with having meeting and planning time on Friday afternoons in order to promote consistency on instruction within departments and grade levels. Based on the direction from the state, we may at any time need to alter the configuration of the hybrid model to meet state and main CDC guidelines. So this is what we're looking at right now for a hybrid model. But we do know that we're getting new information on the 31st, which is later this week. And we will get new data every two weeks. We have to start somewhere with our planning, so we are really, right now, planning on starting in this model, in the yellow, with this model. Again, the yellow model could change depending on direction from the state, but it still would be a combination of remote and in-school learning. Principals continue to work on the creation of the maroon and gold group. So a little information about this, I did get some questions about how the groups were formatted. We started by looking at last names of students within a family, knowing that all, all students in the family do not have the same last name, so that was a bit tricky. We're trying to make this, by having all students in the same family attend school on the same day, we thought that might be easier on families. Then the principals looked at the groups when they divided them and used, especially at the elementary and the middle school level, the many other factors that they use every year when developing class lists, such as creating a balance in gender, balance in needs, and a balance in ability levels. They also looked at teacher comments and recommendations and took those into consideration. So this was a monolith task, but the lists are almost complete. I met with the principals today and they want to check and recheck the lists. But when they're satisfied with their accuracy, then they will release the information. I believe it'll be distributed through Power School. So we're hoping for the end of next week, but that is not written in stone at this point. That's just an estimation. There will be, as you can see at the bottom of the yellow model, a remote learning option. And as I said, we are working on that right now, trying to match high-risk, people with high-risk situations who should not be in classrooms because of their high-risk situations, and students who wish to continue in the hybrid model. So again, this option will be offered on a semester-by-semester basis, and we will reevaluate at the end of every semester. We need to organize it in a semester-by-semester basis in order to match the number of students with the number of teachers. In the hybrid model, I know I've had some suggestions and some lovely pictures about students learning outside. And certainly in the hybrid model, the teachers would be free to take their students outside for learning, maintaining social distancing and mask-wearing, weather permitting. But we do live in Maine, and we know that towards the end of October, it gets a little cold outside. And so to plan for all-year-round outdoor experiences probably wouldn't work for us as it gets colder and colder. Again, we are moving forward, hopefully, with the plans to start in the hybrid model. However, this plan could change based on changes in data from now until the start of school. We could end up, the day before school starts, having the CDC tell us that we're in the red zone and we have to go to remote learning. So our principals and administrators are totally aware of that, and we are making plans for all the various plans. The green level would have 100% for our students in school under main CDC and main DOE guidelines. We've studied this model and tried to think every which way, how we could do this. But really, we think at this point, having all 100% of our students in school, we would not be able to follow the guidelines, and it would not be a safe situation for our students. The second green level would be implemented should a vaccine be discovered and the main CDC and main DOE direct us to remove the guidelines made necessary by COVID-19. That would be wonderful. The framework for returning to classroom instruction from the DOE outlines, here we go, outlines the health and safety measures that schools need to meet at all risk levels. So we have been developing strategies to meet these measures. The first one that, there's been a lot of talk about is the symptom screening before coming to school. And up until, I believe, the end of last week, we were under guidelines that said that, that we needed to screen students. Now, the guidelines have changed, and the most recent version of the main CDC frameworks require students to symptom screen before coming to school. So that would be before coming to school, before getting on the bus. In the usual packet of materials that are provided at the beginning of school to parents through Power School, there will be a parent contract that outlines the cooperation that we need from families, and we really need cooperation from families in, in providing a safe environment for our students. The document will need to be signed before the students return to school in the fall. So we will be, administrators will be, and nurses will be checking Power School to make sure those documents are signed. And the document, one of the things that it says is that you will do screenings at home, and that students will use, will wear masks at school. The screener, here, and here are some of the questions. The screener will consist of several questions that parents and students need to answer before they come to school each day. Staff will also be required to self-assess daily. So we know that there's many apps out there, and there's some Google forms that communicate with the school. We're still researching, since we just heard about this change this week, really, the end of last week, we're still researching. We're looking at apps, we're looking at some forms that will communicate with the school about self-assessments that are done before the, the students get to school. There will be a student, a person at the school that checks the data daily to make sure that everyone has completed their screening before they arrive. And if the screening has not been completed, we will be calling families about that. So we're really, we really, this is really a cooperative venture with, with our families. We're really counting on our families to do this screening. There have been a lot of questions about physical distancing and facilities. And again, these are required health and safety measures that are in our frameworks. So again, this is something that just changed. It was always six feet distancing. Now it's three feet distancing with masks. However, the requirement is still six feet distancing for eating, which we could have more students in our classrooms if we went to the three feet distancing. However, and I think I'll get into this a bit later, our challenge is feeding our students, especially if anybody's been in the Pond Cove Middle School cafeteria, you know that there's many, many students in there, and we have many lunch periods. I think if we did, if we tried to do six feet of distancing, the required six feet for social distancing for eating, we would be sort of having students eat all day. We have been talking all along about keeping students in their little groups and having them eat in, in their classrooms, and that is the plan that we'll move forward with. Our challenge now is how to provide coverage for students in their classrooms while eating, while teachers are able to take their contracted 30 minutes of duty-free lunch. So that is what the principals are working on at this point. We also, the social distancing requirement for buses has changed, and it's now three feet, so we will be able to accommodate more students on our bus. And Pat Fowler is in the process of working on that puzzle. So that will alleviate our bush thing issue a bit. But we will most likely hire monitors that on each bus to make sure that the social distancing and the masks are worn on the buses. So we are working on that. Masks and face coverings must be worn by students and employees at all time, including on the bus, except when eating or when employees are in rooms by themselves. So there may be times when students are elsewhere and employees are in their rooms planning or doing something by themselves, so that would not require a mask. Hand hygiene and protocols will be followed, and our nurses are working on that. And students and staff will be receiving training. That's one of the trainings that will be done on one of those first days in August, when Stafford are, will be done virtually. All, all of our, that whole week, by the way, will be done virtually. Extra hand sanitation stations will be set up throughout the school, so I know Perry is working on that at, at this point. Additional safety precautions are required for nurses and staff supporting students in close proximity. Whoops, that would be eye protection, EYE. Face shields, the like, and we're working on ordering that equipment at this point. And then the last health and safety measure is the return to school after illnesses, after illness, and students would be home until the criteria for their return would be met. And we will have that all outlined in the parent-student handbook. Okay, this has been a question responding to in-school cases of COVID-19, and we do have a process for that. We are expecting, there will be, nurses will have two, basically two rooms. We're going to identify an isolations room for any students that we suspect are showing symptoms of COVID. Parents will be expected to pick up six students within 30 minutes. And we, we are asking parents if they can't, if they're working farther away than 30 minutes and can't get to school in 30 minutes, that they let us know the names of some emergency people that can pick their students up and bring them home within 30 minutes. Very concerned about not spreading germs and not having six students in our schools any longer than we have to. Notify health officials, parents, and staff immediately of a positive case while maintaining confidentially, confidentiality and privacy laws. So we cannot give, and we found that out in the spring, we can't give out specific information about names or grades or, or things like that. Following main CDC advice for the return of, of the person who tested positive. And main CDC is giving that advice. If you are identified with a positive test, you, you will be contacted by CDC and they will advise you about what to do. We will advise those who have contact with the person to stay home and monitor for symptoms following main CDC guidelines. And if a person tests positive but not, does not have symptoms, they also will need to follow main CDC guidelines for home isolation. Additional considerations and recommendations which are within the framework. We need to assess school readiness, which we have been doing. We've been using the CDC flow chart and the, the considerations for opening schools are, there are three. Will reopening be consistent with applicable state and local orders? Is the school ready to protect children and employees at higher risk for severe illness? So that's what we're working on. One of the things we're working on right now, and are you able to screen students and employees? Now, this is where it's changed upon arrival, and it's no longer upon arrival, it is now they, at home, before arrival to school. So we are constantly assessing our readiness for the opening of school, identifying the next area we need to address. As we put these plans in place, we'll be constantly reassessing to determine what's working and what we need to change. Number two, disinfecting facilities. Our custodial staff has been developing plans to disinfect our facilities, and we have been directed by the state to remove all unnecessary furniture toys and other items from our classroom in order to make disinfecting easier as we work to provide a germ-free environment for our students and staff. So that is something that, not only do we have to remove the unnecessary furniture, and some of those things belong to teachers, so we're going to ask our teachers to be taking home their things that might fall under those categories. But extra, if we have extra desks, extra furniture, then we are making plans on where to store that. So that's another area that we need to think about. Disinfecting high-touch areas, and we worked on that as we were closing out school last year. High, high-touch areas such as doorknobs, copying machines, faucets, just, and plans are in the works to disinfect them frequently. We will be marking six-foot distancing in hallways outside of bathrooms and in areas where students line up. And we will be marking one-way directions in the hallway similar to what they do in the grocery stores. This is going to be a challenge in some of our schools, and it may be that hallways are divided in half with going down one side and back up the other, because some of our hallways really don't have the capacity to have a to and a from like the grocery stores do. We talked in the district planning meeting a bit about providing communications, parents and staff, and that will remain through our Facebook page and our Power School blast and always on our website. So I am constantly reminding people to check those, those places. Staff, we felt like the email system was adequate, and I was asked to send out texts to people if it was something, an emergency, that they needed to look at their email. We are working on our staff trainings for that first week. We are working on our staff trainings for that first week and those will continue, I imagine throughout the year as we look at those. Now PD Fridays. The nurses have done some work on providing training to families. They've located some videos that they are posting. Our tech people are working on some trainings. I think some of them will be virtual, sort of as much in-person as we can get at this point. But. They will be providing some training on some of the technology that we're, that we're using. And communicating expectations to family and staff about self-assessment. So again, that's the, that's the self-screening that is needed to be done before students come to school every day. So we actually started working on this today, thanks to the leadership of our Director of Special Services, Del Teve. He's going to work with school counselors, social workers and some special service providers. And they'll be meeting, I just saw that he put out a meeting for them today. So they will be meeting to develop plans to address the social emotional behavior and mental health needs of our students. As we return to school during this stressful time. And we know that students as well as staff are, are and will be stressed. We've gone through some interesting times. This team will develop plans to offer and provide support to students and families in need. To provide frequent check-ins with staff, families and students. And they'll make a list of available resources for students and parents who are experiencing distress. So they will, they will be starting to work on that very soon. School teams have already started working to develop instructional plans for various learning models within their schools. They'll be addressing instructional strategies, grading, assessments and student support, as well as many other things. There are plans, we have our advisory group at the middle, at the high school. And I know that Troy and Kyle are working and the, and the teachers there are working on developing an advisory group, advisory system at the middle school. So we have those advisors that will be meeting. Often with their advisory groups, ready to support students who are struggling or experiencing needs. Teams of teachers will continue to meet to review students experiencing learning loss and to arrange for available support. So there are lots of, of plans in the works, lots of planning being done at this point on the academic programs and. Supports for student learning. We do have some common expectations. I know that in one of the, or some of the comments that we received when we did the emergency remote learning. Survey was that we needed common expectations. So we are working on within the schools and within the district on creating common expectations for both the hybrid and the remote learning models. And that will be agreed upon course or grade level learning targets. So talking, teams are meeting to talk about where, where do students need to be at this point in the year? What are the expectations for, for their learning targets for. Small amounts of time and setting up schedules for learning. We need to work on certifying student attendance each day. We are required to do that by the state, so we will be working on a plan for that. Accepted and consistent teaching platforms, coordination of workloads when students have different teachers for different schedules. And the multi-tiered system of supports for meeting students' needs. Groups of teachers are working on, are and will be working on all of those things between now and when school starts. And it will continue after school starts as well. Our plan for grading and for certifying achievement, a plan for providing student nutrition. Peter Esposito, our Director of Student Services, has, has done a great job with, from the very beginning, providing. Food for families and students and he will continue doing that. It will be. An added step with having some students in the class and some students at home. So that, that will be interesting for him. I know that he is planning on when students are in school, serving in the classrooms. And they will be individually wrapped lunches with disposable. Silverware in order to try to prevent the spread of germs. And communication with families to assist in understanding expectations, who to contact and where to get help when necessary. So we are working on a flow chart that will help and that will be in the student parent handbook, parent student handbook. Who to contact if you have an issue with something, maybe if your technology is not working, who to contact? If you are not understanding. One of the assignments, who to contact, just a flow chart on who to contact if you, if you're having an issue with something. We want, we want people to. To be able to get the help they need, that's very important. Additional considerations, our nurses are going to be very busy as we enter the new school year. And but you know, they have been working all summer, they've been very busy all summer, working on procedures and plans and keeping up with. Main CDC guidelines. I know Aaron's been on a state committee, they've been attending meetings virtually, so they have been extremely busy all summer. They will be triaging and monitoring.
Very busy as we've entered the new school year and but you know, they have been working all summer. They've been very busy all summer, working on, are you hearing that? Plans and keeping up with.
Yeah, technology.
State committee.
I don't know what that is, Donna, that sounds like a, like a little reaction from you, yeah.
I think it's that people have to mute and it's, we're hearing feedback from someone's machine.
Somebody must be on like the Facebook Live. Page, yeah, so everybody should be on mute except for Donna.
Thank you.
Please, thank you, yeah.
I figured that was the Facebook page.
Yeah.
Anyway. So they're going to be triaging and monitoring students who are displaying symptoms and making determinations based on standard protocols and main CDC guidelines. So we are looking to maybe main CDC guidelines for our guidance at this point and our framework. Transportation has been an interesting issue as we divide students into maroon and gold groups and identify students who. Wish to continue with remote learning for the semester. And as we review our survey of parents who express interest in transporting their own students. Pat Fowler will be taking these puzzle pieces and using them to create a bus schedule. So I'm, I just want to put this out there to parents. If we, we had your names with those surveys, so we're going by that. But if your situation changes during the summer, would you please let Pat know? So she can either add you to the bus schedule or take you off the bus schedule. She will be in arranging bus routes in order to ensure the required social distancing. Bus assignments will be made and only those assigned students will be admitted to the buses. So we're, we're going to be very strict about that because we have to follow the social distancing guidelines and the bus. The buses will be set up according to those guidelines for social distancing. Students needing bus transportation should be picked up at the same bus stop every day. And they have to be dropped off at the same bus stop every day. I know in the past, we've tried to be really. Helpful about maybe somebody needs to go this place on Tuesday and then this place on Wednesday and a different place on Friday. And because of our social distancing requirements, we really have to be mindful of who is assigned to what bus. So it's okay if they are picked up at one spot and dropped off at the, the other spot. And we know that ahead of time, but it has to be consistent. It can't, it can't change from day to day. So that's, I know that's going to be really hard for some people, but it's the way we have to do it in order to ensure social distancing. And to ensure the safety of all the students on the bus. Many parents answered that they would be driving their students to school. So that was great, except we know that this is going to cause a traffic issue in town with citizens trying to get to work. And any of you who have been caught in just the traffic jam of trying to get our student, drop our students off or trying to get to work in the. In the area know that there's quite a traffic jam that usually starts about quarter of eight. And if you get stuck in that, it's, it's difficult. So we are going to be talking with Chief, Chief of Police Fenton as we look further into the traffic challenges. One of the things we have talked about is assigning different drop-off points throughout the campus and we will look into that further. But we know that, that this is going to cause a traffic jam in town and we'll try to work to do the best we can with that. To alleviate that situation. I would advise anybody who can drive around town to get to work to do that. So we, we are going to put out some additional guidance. The employee handbook, the draft is on our supporting documents page for tonight's meeting. I don't, we just got that up this afternoon, but you might want to take a look at that. It is a draft and as, as CDC, main CDC and main DUE guidelines change, that will be revised as well. And we are working. Jill Young has done a lot of work on the parent student handbook. There will be links for each school to put specific school information, so we are, we are working on that. So with that, I'd like to give the principals an opportunity to talk a little bit about the planning that they have done. We just really finished the end of June with our. Sorry, mid-July with our district planning team meetings. And so then the plan was for them to take them back to their school teams to start to work. So they're just really, some of them got a head start on that. But let's start with Jeff Shad at the high school. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what's going on with your planning? This is all very drafty at this point and subject to change.
Sure, well, I've got a team of eleven staff members who have met, I think we've met five times. And the committee is two administrators, Nate Carpenter and myself, and then nine other staff members, including teachers and ed techs. At our first meeting, we made some decisions about, thinking about areas of the building or circumstances, the building that could create. Bottlenecks and traffic tie-ups between adults in the building. So we agreed that we would be holding meetings for the foreseeable future until we're confident that it's safe. Adult meetings online, so that they would be virtual. We have talked about closing the faculty lunchroom for use for that purpose, because that's another space where there's, there is. Frequent contact between adults. We will be delivering mail to teachers, so they're not having to come into the cramped quarters of the main office. And we are going to be relocating one of the copier machines in the main office to try to spread out use of copier machines. And also to. Encourage teachers as much as possible not to, not to copy as much as we used to. One of the things we did learn in remote learning is that we can get by without doing a lot of photocopying. The next three meetings were pretty much dominated by a discussion of the schedule. What our school, daily school schedule would look like. And as you summarized, Donna, we've talked about, you know, Monday and Wednesday, there's a half of the kids who are in school. And Tuesday and Thursday, the other half of the students are in school. It's not strictly alphabetical as you discussed. And then we talked about essentially how to divide up the time blocks. For those of you who are familiar with it, we have in the high school an eight-period schedule in normal times. We will continue to have an eight-period schedule, but after several meetings with committee, particularly the last committee meeting. We sort of stepped back and said, what are the criteria that we're going to be using to judge which schedule would be the best? That suits our purposes. And we listed a whole bunch of criteria and then in small groups, we prioritize them and then we shared those in the larger group. And there was a really strong consensus around several top criteria in terms of identifying a school schedule. And the first one was, and everybody's list was safety and health. So that really sort of pointed us in the direction of minimizing as much as possible students passing. In the high school, given the nature of our schedule, we can't, it really doesn't work in the high school to do pods of students who are in one location all day. Because kids are, they're mixed up in different classes and that sort of things. But what we decided is we needed a schedule that would minimize to the extent we could passing from one classroom to another. A second one that there was a strong consensus about was adaptability, that whatever, because we are going to face the situation where. One week may be in remote learning and then we may have to go into hybrid learning and then three weeks later, we may be able to go into live learning. We decided a really important consideration was adaptability, that we should have a schedule. That we can with very minor tweaks, adapt to any of those situations. Which quite frankly pushed us away from our relatively complex, normal day-to-day schedule at the high school, which is a rotating schedule in the morning and the afternoons. We talked about simplicity and manageability for teachers and students as a really top consideration. And probably the next one that was among the top in all the groups was whatever we do that needs to be able to work with kids who cannot come to the high school for whatever reason. Because of their health risks and those sorts of things. So what we have settled on is referring to as a shorter block schedule. It's not completely set in stone as few things seem to be, but we have, I think, a strong belief that the original idea was. On Mondays, which would be a maroon Monday, the maroon kids would be there and our, we would have four of our eight periods meet. On Tuesday. We would have the next group of kids in school and the other four periods would meet. And on Wednesday, we would have again, the, another group of kids. And, and, and so basically what would happen is that every day, four periods would meet, half the kids would be in school at any one time. And, and the way it works out, really it would work out in that situation is that each kid would, each student would be with each. Half of the students in their classes one time per week. We've since had some further discussions based on a recommendation from a teacher and in part inspired by some thinking that's coming from South Portland High School. About basically sticking with that model in the big picture sense. But instead of alternating the periods that meet during the days, have the same periods meet for a period of either four weeks or eight weeks. And then the next period to meet for four weeks or eight weeks. The advantage of that, it was, it would allow teachers to meet with their students live twice per week. Some I know, some people who are listening to this can visualize this, some people it's boggling their minds, but it's basically. The other reason we, so there were two reasons we're talking about either a four-week or eight-week alternating block essentially. Still in that system, half the kids would be in the building one day, then the other half of kids in the building the next day, and then that would just keep rotating. But the other reason to do that, it was, it would actually minimize the number of kids who are passing through our classrooms in any, on any given day. So it would essentially cut the potential number in half or in any given week. Because we'd have just a certain number of students being in the building for an extended period of time. So that's where we are. Our last meeting, we started talking about things like masks and ventilation issues has been a big discussion in terms of keeping our classroom doors open. We've had discussions about keeping windows open that present some issues depending on where a particular classroom is located. And noises that can be coming from outside. We've had discussions about keeping the exterior. Doors of the building open. We haven't settled on anything around that because that presents some issues as well. We've talked about bringing fans into classrooms to increase ventilation, which is a huge thing. And the last meeting, we also started talking about student lockers and students' access to lockers, because those are other areas where students can come together. And our strong inclination would be not to have students use lockers, particularly if we have only, students are only responsible for four periods a day when they're in school. So that reduces the number of classes, materials they need to carry around with them. Obviously, when the weather gets cold, they need someplace to put their. Obviously, when the weather gets cold, they need someplace to put their, their, their suits, their jackets. So, so we haven't sort of settled that. So the next up on the list, the things we need to talk about is lunch, as you suggested, and in the high school study hall. So that will be, those will be topics among others at our next meeting. So that's in a nutshell, what we have in mind.
Okay, so are we going Donna through all the principals?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I didn't see Troy on the
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead Troy.
Would you like to speak Troy?
Sure. So I think we've basically done a lot of the things Jeff's done, so I will save some of that time. Some of the work Jeff and his group has done around bottlenecks and staff precautions, I think is awesome and it, and I think we're just going to steal it all from him because it sounds like it makes perfect sense. But largely at the middle school, our, our schedule is always slightly different from the high school anyways. We are basically much more of a traditional seven periods in a day. So right now, our goal, much like Jeff's, is always first student safety, student staff. How can we ensure that? And to do that, it's really about following CDC guidelines and you know, we've really gotten into the podding idea of how, how do we create the smallest groups of, of students per day that we can and limit the, the transitions that they have in the interactions with other adults. So there are some necessary transitions, but, but by nature, our fifth and sixth grade has always been kind of two-person teams. So that works out really nicely. Pre-COVID, we were beginning to start to work on seventh and eighth really becoming more content-based. So our schedule was kind of pre-designed for that. We have since had a lot of conversations individually with seventh grade teachers, with eighth grade teachers. And we've made the decision to go with the two-person teaming model for seventh and eighth grade as well. And the goal is to limit the number of students per team. And, and right now it looks like we're in that, around the 35 student ballpark. And we can do that with just some tweaks to our schedule. So I think that's pretty good. Much like Jeff said, we, we also, it's really important to us in looking at the survey data from parents, you know, from last spring, that whatever we do, it should be very flexible and, and it really needs to be able to work across the different models. So our regular traditional kind of school schedule, now that it's been tweaked and there's still a few tweaks to do to it, will work for teaming across our building. It will also work in a hybrid model and it will also work for remote learning. So I think with just a few tweaks here and there, that's going to be, that'll be very helpful for us. So that's really one, one pretty big goal that we have. We have met today for the first time with our building-based committee. I think we had about 22 people there. And the discussion was really an update to where we are and Jill gave us a great health and safety update because I think that's the leading question that we all have is what are the guidelines? How are we going to follow them? Because those have to be in place before we can build our designs, our schedules and our, you know, our hallways and how do we walk through them and all of those things. And we're also thinking of having students enter the building at multiple locations because it's probably, there's a good chance it's going to be kind of a rolling start to every day and a rolling end due to the busing and some of the restrictions that we have. So in order to kind of make that as efficient as we can, things like that are going to be, will be a change. We are implementing the advisor program again. And right now through our team leaders, we've identified what are the roles and responsibilities of an advisor? What, what would a parent or a student go to an advisor for? And what, for example, might they go to Power School for? And we're working on creating some consistent expectations around Google Classroom. So because it's very hard to navigate a couple of Google classrooms, say nothing about seven, eight, nine of them. And that was a lot of feedback from parents and from teachers in the building that may have to work with other classroom teachers. So taking a lot of the information off the survey and trying to put it to use and work out some, some nice solutions. We already had a win period, kind of like Jeff was talking about his study hall. But the idea behind win typically is that if a student needs help from another teacher, they can go see that teacher. Obviously, that's not going to be an effective model right now and trying to limit the, the transitions for students. So that really is probably going to look much more like an advisor kind of period. Where, where a lot of that work can be done. So we're in the process right now of trying to align our advisor groups with those win periods and work through that, that whole process. So largely, that's kind of where we are right now and we know that a lot of stuff is going to continue to change. We did have our, I'm really happy to have 22 people volunteer to show up at a meeting today in the middle of the summer to talk about that. And we had a wide range of expertise. And so we're breaking that down into about five subgroups of high interests that people will be able to work on in small groups. So the large groups aren't always meeting. So that's, that is kind of where we are. We feel like we're in a good place. I think that we could work on this steady for two years and not feel like we're ever probably really ready. But largely, I feel like we are in a great place. We have great people working with us. I'm sure that we can, we can do it. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay, Pond Cove. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Jason.
Yes, thanks Heather. So I want to start by thanking the administrative team and the teachers who are, are working through the summer and thanking the parents and families for being so flexible and supportive. I've had lots of conversations with families, moms and dads over the, the past few months and gotten a lot of really great ideas from them and a lot of, of really great compliments and in some, in some good, honest feedback. So thank you all. Much of what I say will be similar to what Troy and Jeff said because we do work so closely together. As Donna said, we meet one or two times a week. We've been doing that all summer long, so we're really in sync with each other. So you know, at Pond Cove, to, to build off of the work that has been completed by the district committee, we are starting to draft plans for the three scenarios, which would be of course, full remote, hybrid, which is partial remote and, and partial on campus and also if students all are able to come back to campus, which we all hope will happen. And so we're, we've put quite a bit of emphasis on the hybrid model, but we're, we're paying close attention to all three because we, we are not sure where we'll start and we expect to possibly move from one to the other. And we want to be able to do so seamlessly if that, if the time comes. So right now at Pond Cove, we we are, we have two committees that have been formed, two separate committees. The first is the curriculum planning committee. And so that committee has two to three representatives from each grade level. And they're charged with developing a scope and sequence and assessment package for either a full remote plan or a hybrid plan. And we know that we'll be starting in a different place than we typically would. So teachers are being asked to think about the fact that although we did offer some great remote teaching, it still wasn't quite the same and students, you know, left campus in March. And so we're going to be assessing kids very early as we always do, but expecting some different results this year and tailoring our instruction just to meet the student needs. So that committee has been working for a few weeks. And, and we're checking in with them and they're sharing, they're going to be sharing what they're working on with each other for consistency across grade levels. And we're excited about that work. The second committee is just the, we're calling it the Pond Cove reopening committee and it's really about logistics. So based on CDC recommendations, we're going to be working on those logistics. So schedules, traffic patterns. And as Troy mentioned, we're we're really headed in, headed in the direction of the pods, you know, so we're trying, our top priority is safety. And so we are making sure or trying to limit the amount of adults, different adults, students are in contact with and different students they're in contact with to be as preventative as possible. So we're working on that. And our goal, you know, our goal right now is to get as many kids back into Pond Cove as possible safely. And we want to make a plan for that and get information out to families as soon as we can. We really, we know that there's a sense of urgency. You know, most of us are parents as well and we're all want to know what our students, what their lives will be like in the fall and we really empathize with that and we're working as hard as we can. So thank you families for your patience. So that's really where we're at right now. I'm not sure if there, if, if there's anything else I should add, Donna or Heather or anything I missed.
Donna, we can't hear you, just so you know. There you go. You should be okay Donna. Yes.
We, people have been working really hard this summer. There's been a lot of great work that's going on. It's, it's difficult work. It's frustrating because we don't have all the information and it could change any moment, but everybody's really dug in and I just, I too want to thank everybody for all their hard work this summer. It's been, they're a great team.
Yeah. Okay. I think, does that complete your presentation Donna?
It does.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to questions from the school board for a moment. And I did see that there were a few comments, questions in the chat and I will address those in a moment. But is, is there anything immediate from the school board to ask or comments that you would like to add before we open it up to the public a little more? Now sir?
I got a question.
Okay.
I think one of the people is asking a similar question and going in a similar direction. Is going back to school even if it's hybrid or full-time an option or is it a must? And if it's one or the other, are we going to have a different health sheets signing up in reference to a student being or being hurt or being affected in the school system? So is there a way for school to protect itself or not? Is there paperwork like that? That's going to be different this year.
So now sir, you're talking about high-risk students?
Not high-risk, just a student getting, getting the virus and God forbid, either their family or their student passes death-wise.
So you want, so you're asking about paperwork?
How is a school legally protected from a lawsuit?
Well, we have found out that, that's a good question. We have found out that our, our insurance company does not cover airborne diseases. So the way we're going to protect ourselves is to follow CDC guidelines and main DOE guidelines very, very carefully.
There's no additional paperwork from parents to sign?
There will be a contract that is in that initial packet on Power School that parents will sign saying that they, they will screen their students. They, their students, they understand that their students will wear masks. Nurses, do you want to chime in? What else is on that contract?
And lastly, the other question was, is it a must for a student to attend or they can opt out as well? Portfolio, one semester or what?
The remote learning, the special remote learning would be a sign up for us one semester first. At it one semester at a time.
Erin, I see you there. Would you like to speak up?
I, I can't. I'm trying, I was trying to find our the draft of the contract just to run it through with people. So we had about six or seven boxes that parents would by signing their name on the form would basically be checking off that they have reviewed. So the first one would be that they have read and understood the parent handbook that will be sent home once it's out of draft form. And also we're in the process of working on student communication as well. So a slideshow that can be shared with students so that they understand their responsibilities once they are in the school building as far as hygiene, social distancing, mask wearing. And then the contracts, the next one is I've read, understand and agree to comply with the expectations of myself and my child to complete daily symptom checklist honestly and report absences related to these symptoms per building protocol. So that is going to be hugely important for all families every day to let us know through Power School or whatever system is in place in their school buildings as to why their child is absent for the day. Just to help us with monitoring for symptoms, potential outbreaks. And then there's a box where I have plan in place to be able to pick up my child in 30 minutes of being contacted by the school nurse should my child become ill while in school rounds. I agree to follow the guidance and recommendations of the school nurse related to COVID-19 symptoms and the return to school. And I understand the school closure could occur at any given time, which may result in 100% remote learning.
Thank you Erin.
Hi, it's Jill Young here, the nurse at the middle school. I just wanted to add, I just wanted to add to Erin's comments there on our parent contract. It is in draft form. However, a very important piece of that contract is that you know, all of us as school nurses, our job is to ensure the safety and wellbeing of our staff and students. And in part, doing that, we are also doing that for our community as a whole. And returning back to school mid-pandemic does not allow for that. We will do our very best. And the contract does read that the health and safety of students and employees are the district's top priority. This requires your help and compliance. However, during these uncertain times, the Cape Elizabeth School Department cannot guarantee that your child will not be exposed to COVID-19 while at school. So just being very upfront with that and that is, again, that's draft form, but it would be very similar to that, just stating that this is a unique situation and we cannot guarantee and ensure your child's wellbeing as far as exposure to the virus. It's very likely that not only will they be exposed, but we could even potentially have an outbreak. It's just the situation that we're in. So it's just acknowledging that.
Thank you Jill. And I believe Kimberly was trying to speak as well. Are you there Kimberly? Do you have a comment? Kimberly Carr? And then Hope, you can speak. I see your hand. Let's give Kimberly a second.
Thank you Heather. I had a couple of questions. There were some, I guess Vermont has pushed their school start date back and I'm wondering if you're hearing anything along those lines potentially happening here Donna. And I guess also wondering if there's been any talk of, if we are in a yellow zone and able to start with a hybrid model of what is our plan to just start right out the gate with the alternating maroon gold days or have a slower pace and see how it goes and ramp up or what is our plan for that?
So one of the things, so our governor has not come out with anything, nor do I expect. Maine works a little different than Vermont. Vermont's very much top-down from the, they don't call it the DOE, but they work very different. They have a very different system than we do. So I don't expect anything from the governor. She never actually tells us when the first day of school is or the governor doesn't. That's something that districts work on tradition and work on, work together. We, we send our students to PALS, so that's another piece of that and we can only have five dissimilar days. So we have to work within the PALS schedule. Things have changed a little this year, but I don't expect anything from the governor. We have talked about doing some rolling in. Maybe that first week of school, having say the freshmen come a few days by themselves to the high school. So you may see some information about that, maybe the fifth graders. So they can get used to the new school buildings and do some teamwork. So there may be, there may be some plans in place for that. and do some teamwork. So, there may be, there may be some plans in place for that. And I, as I said, we, we talked about the kindergarten and doing their traditional kindergarten entry rather than just starting school the first day, but having some time to do some screening. So, we're, we're in the midst of making those plans and talking about those things right now.
Thank you Donna. Hope? If you want to unmute yourself.
So, I think tonight I heard we have the, we have the different phases we can be in. We can be green, yellow, red, yellow, green, and that it will change based on data. And I, I think I heard tonight that could change every two weeks, but I, I, I'm trying to get an idea of like, every week, we're gonna be basically waiting for the data to come out and then we'll know this is what. Can you elaborate on how that will be so we know, you know, sort of the cadence of, how far in the future we have?
This plan was revealed, I think, last week. I don't have a lot of information about it from the DOE, except that they told us that we would get our first data on July 31st and then we would get a different set of scientific data on which to make our decisions every two weeks. And that's really all that they gave us. I have no idea when in the day it's coming out, or how we're receiving the information. I, I don't know.
Thank you. I guess, I think that's useful for us to sort of have in mind, so we can envision that we're likely going to be in a roughly two-week adaptability mode and that's what we should expect, that it, it could change. And being in Cumberland County, we're probably going to be the, the, one of the districts that sort of may be changing more rapidly as we go into the, the winter months.
Yeah, I have, I have no idea about, you know, what, what the data will even look like to put us into a red. They've not shared that.
Thank you.
I have a question Heather.
Thank you Hope. Can I get to Phil first Laura? And then I'll get to you.
Oh sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Let's listen to Phil and then Hope.
Yeah, thanks. Well, thank you Donna. It's, that was very helpful and interesting to see and see how much work has gone into this, first of all. It's the first I've really heard the details. I have, I just wrote down a couple of questions, because like all of us, we, we get questions from our neighbors and community members as board members. So, I kind of, I wanted to spring a couple of those questions to the forefront that I received. It may not have answers, but two questions just kept coming up and maybe it's more too specific at this point, but one was, we've landed, it sounds like, on the maroon and gold every other day. Did you consider an every other week schedule where you keep groups together? I got that question a couple of times. And I'm sure there's good reason why you didn't do that, but it'd be helpful just to sort of think, hear that process you went through. And then, and second, sort of related to that, was, did you think through different schedules for different schools based on the potential for maybe younger people who may, you know, may need to go back, be in school more often. It's harder for them to do distance learning versus high school, which was that considered? And I, I hear that it, we're not doing that, but it would be just good to hear the thought process behind those two questions. Thank you.
Yeah, so we did talk about, we did talk about the every other week and we decided that, that would provide, and principals jump in. It would, there would be too much of a gap between learning. So, students go every week and then they're off for a whole week. And we just decided that there would be too much of a learning gap. We really want to keep our kids engaged and in school as much as possible in some kind of a schedule. And we looked at that schedule because, and thinking about, as I said before, putting families on the same schedule, we thought it would be easier and less confusing for them. So, we did want to work on that. What was your second question?
My second question was whether there was any consideration about having younger kids go more days and older kids stay out more. It's just more of a question than anything that I was getting a couple of times, so I thought I'd pass that along.
That would still be a possibility in that yellow, in that yellow zone. And we did, we have talked about that. And as of last week, we were kind of expecting that we would get that direction from the state because I was hearing that we might be directed to send our K-5. And I know that, I've talked to Troy and he said, please can we keep the middle school all the same? It'd be really difficult to have one group go back, one grade go back all, you know, every week, all week, and have the rest of the school on an every other day schedule. But that, that may be coming. We're not ruling that out. And I know that Jason and I have talked and he's talked with his staff and you know, we, that's one of the things that we, we may move to. But that would fall in that yellow with, with the hybrid.
Laura, thank you for waiting. You have to unmute now. You're muted.
Gracious. Oh rookie mistake. Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for all the hard work and thoughtful consideration that has gone into all these plans, planning for every different scenario. And, and I think everybody was looking for, or is looking for a definitive answer, like, let's just know what we're doing, but it sounds like we can't get that answer. Now we know why, so the clarity is, is very good for the community. In the yellow hybrid model, because it does look like, okay, all, you know, we, we don't know for sure, but if we can somehow plan on this yellow hybrid model, do we have, first, and I saw some questions come on, on the chat, so I want to clarify some of those. So, if they're on alternate schedule, like a Monday, Wednesday, or a Tuesday, Thursday, that would be a full day? Is that a full day?
Yes.
For that? And the half-day would be the alternate Fridays? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I saw some questions come up, come across on that. And then, when would we know sort of if our, if our children would be a Monday, Wednesday, or a Tuesday, Thursday? If, so we say, okay, this is hypothetical, we don't know for sure. But if we do go to the yellow hybrid model, you can ensure that your child or children would be on these days so that we can, as parents, plan?
Yeah.
So, that's my first question.
The principals are almost there with their lists. So, probably the end of next, by the end of next week, I'm hope, we're hoping. It's not a guarantee, but it's, they're getting really close. So, we know, we know that people are waiting, waiting for that and it's really important to move forward with plans. So, we're, we're trying to get that done as soon as possible. There are a few missing pieces that we're waiting for, but.
So, end of next week is the goal. And then there was some other questions on just for the, for the remote learning day. So, say there is the hybrid model, for those two days that are remote learning, or 2.5 days, or some, some weeks would be three days. From a time commitment for the student, is there, is there any idea for, for the parents? Like, if you have an elementary school student, you could expect X amount of hours of, of workload? Or middle school student would be such and high school student would be considered a full day of assignments and, and learning?
I know that they are.
Or does it depend on the teacher, or how, how does that work?
Oh, I know that the principals are working on that with their staff and we do want to come out with a set of consistent expectations. So, that will be.
That will be coming soon too. All right, thank you. That was my question.
Thanks Laura.
Thanks. Elizabeth had some comments or questions. You're muted still Elizabeth.
Sorry, I thought I unmuted. There we go. I wanted to thank everybody. I felt like the, the nurses have carried a very heavy load this summer, as well as administrators and Donna. So, I just, I need to thank everybody for their hard work. I hope you get a day off someday and get to sleep a full night at some point. So, thank you everybody. I wanted to talk a little bit about, and I know this, this is gonna sound like a hard, a harsh way to talk about it, but kind of like mask enforcement. It sounds like in order for everybody to be safe, we have to rely on everybody's compliance. And so, having bet on the committee, I'm already sort of preparing. I'm preparing my kids. I'm preparing, you know, neighbors who ask me questions and that sort of thing. That, you know, yes, your student will be required to wear a face covering. And there are people who have philosophical objections to science, I guess, and don't prefer to wear masks. And, you know, I, I don't know what to, to say to them as far as if they walk in the door of the high school. My feeling is that the student would be required to wear a mask if, if he or she didn't have one, given one, if they say they don't have one, or they forgot it. Or what? Or, or you know, do we call the parent and say, okay, you have to come get your child, your child's not complying? Or like, how do we do this?
Well, we would have some masks available. We've been, we've been ordering and the state just put in an order. We put in an order to the state. So, we do have some masks available. Students will be expected to wear masks. And if they're not compliant, we'll, we will be calling families. It, it has to be understood that to keep people as safe as possible, students and staff need to wear masks.
I can answer a little bit of Elizabeth's questions there and uncertainty there. When meeting with our middle school today, I, after sharing with them what we just shared with you, with that, with our building level committee, I said, okay, we've shared our game plan with you. And that's what it is. We're going into this game and we are the underdogs. And we're needing to defeat COVID-19 pandemic. And the only way that we have a shot is to follow these guidelines. We're all excited to get back into school. We all want that sense of normal. And we're gonna do the best we can. And that's why we've had this team working hard all summer long to come up with what that looks like, how we can bring people back in the safest way possible. But that requires compliance from each and every one of us, everyone in our community, every student, every staff member, every parent, because one person doesn't do their part on the field. One person doesn't execute our game plan to perfection. And we don't even stand a chance. The only way we stand a chance is for everybody to do their part and play their role. And that, we may still, like, even if we execute this plan perfectly, with all these safety precautions in place that we've developed, even if we execute it perfectly, we are the underdog. We may not win. We may be defeated, but we will know that, hey, we gave it our best shot. So, as far as the masks go, we saw what happens with, when Governor Mills makes it a recommendation versus a requirement. So, when it was a recommendation, I was in the gas station and I was sometimes the only one with a mask on. Now that it's a requirement, we're seeing more compliance. So, the protocols that we have in place are not recommendations. They are requirements. And that's the only way that we can all do our best part. And if there are concerns around wearing a mask, or if it's difficult for a student or a staff member to wear a mask, then they should contact administrator, their administrator in their building for, to see what their alternate accommodations could be. And remote learning would be what that would look like for them. If they're coming into the building, it's required, a mask is worn 100% of the time.
Unless they're eating.
Unless, sorry, unless they're eating. Yes.
We do allow them to eat.
Thank you Jill. Kimberly has another comment. And then Nasser, it looks like you have something.
Sorry, sorry, that broke up on me. Were you calling on me Heather Kimberly, or were you going to?
Yes. Nope, go ahead Kimberly.
Okay. All right. Um, yes, I, I want to, just a huge shout-out to Donna and the nurses and all the administrators and the staff who have really just spent your entire summer on this, you know, day after day, hour after hour, researching, planning and replanning. And your thoughtful consideration to safety and learning and the social and emotional well-being of the students is admirable and appreciated. I wondered, I had two questions, thinking about, thinking about the alternating days and recognizing that, you know, a lot of our teachers may have students in other districts who, you know, are going to school other days. How, how are we making, how's it gonna work for, for our teachers, I guess? You know, we obviously want to support them as much as we can in this time and, and, you know, and also educate our students and, you know, so how is, how do we anticipate that's gonna look? And then, just wondering about the school days, is it, is it a regular full day that we're anticipating? And, you know, sort of the similar hours that our students attended previously? Or is that what we're anticipating? Monday through Thursday with the half-day Friday? And does, does that, um, yes, I guess I'll stop right there for the moment. Thank you.
I'll answer your last question first. So, yeah, so it would be a regular school day, except for Friday, which would be a half-day. So, about the same hours. It may, it will take us longer to do our bus runs. So, we know that students will probably be arriving in, in waves to school and then leaving in waves. But because we have limited space on the bus, limited seating on the bus, we, we do know that that the bus routes will be, the bus runs will be shorter, but there may be more of them and it will take longer. So, we're anticipating that. As far as other districts, I know that this, the whole childcare thing is a concern for superintendents. At least I know in Cumberland County, we discussed it, the last couple of meetings we've had and I'm sure we'll be discussing it again tomorrow. One of the things we agreed on at the last meeting, we do have superintendent's agreements that are available and we all agreed that we would, in order to allow our staff, and we have a lot of staff that bring, that have their students attend school in Cape Elizabeth anyway, but just, we wanted it stated that we would be very flexible in allowing for superintendent's agreement. So, if, if staff wanted to bring their students to, at least to those, those two days that they would be in school here, that, that, that we would certainly allow that. I talked to Kathy Raftis today from, from our community services and I had asked her a couple of weeks ago if they had been thinking about providing any additional childcare this year. And they are meeting on Thursday to talk about that. So, that's also another option. I do understand that within the community, there are some pods of families that are getting together to try to address the childcare issue as parents go back to work and try to help each other. And I think that's a great idea to, you know, watch each other's children and just arrange for ways that the community can help each other with, with the childcare situation. So, I know, we realize it's, it's a huge issue.
Go ahead Kimberly. Did you have more?
No. No, I was just saying, thank you. I appreciate the response.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth has her hand raised again.
I think Nasser was next.
Oh, yes, Nasser.
Okay, I may be able to stop Elizabeth asking questions too, because.
Oh, no you can't Nasser, you never will.
Because I feel like we all are asking question and I'm asking questions. And the administration is doing their best to answer it. And the answer may be correct now, but the answer may be wrong in the future. Everything is a moving target. Every single thing is a moving target. So, for example, my question I asked in the chat was, what if there were 10 students who were positive within a month? Do we close the school? What do we do? So, there's a lot of hypothetical questions. I was wondering if, I think Noah is here, our IT guy. And I was wondering if we can establish a forum or place where all of us can just send all of our questions and concerns and make an FAQ out of it and have, provide that for all our community, if this has not already been done. So.
Yeah, actually Nasser, we're, we're starting that for the teacher layers, just working on that. And I thought, you know, this is probably a good idea for the community. I'm not sure if I could keep up with the questions, but I would try.
Yeah. That's, so that's it. There was just more.
That's a great idea.
Thank you Nasser. Elizabeth?
I just want to circle back to kind of something that Kimberly brought up, which is that I'm, I'm hearing from neighbors. hearing from neighbors in the Facebook community that someone or some people have started a kind of a cooperative or something to look at childcare and supporting education. And it would be great if we were able to, you know, amplify that or direct people to somebody, because not everybody has access to Facebook or people don't choose to use Facebook. So I'm reaching out. I was kind of aware when that group got started, and I don't remember who started it. And it, it, so whoever, whoever you are out there, it would be great to, to reach out to the school department, I think, in case, you know, we have families reach out to us and then we can say, hey, we know of this and you might want to, you know, join forces with them. So I just wanted to throw that out there and also say that I think it's a great example of parents supporting each other and, you know, us all coming together to make the best of a difficult situation. So it was just really cool to see that on Facebook. It was several weeks ago. So I had a question, and it's sort of along the lines that, that people are talking about as far as our teachers and, and not necessarily directly related to their own childcare, but in thinking about the hybrid model, it sounds like teachers would be in the building five days a week and the students would be in buildings less. So I guess my question is, you know, are, how are we protecting and keeping teachers safe if teachers are in the building five days a week with, with all the, with the students just coming in different days? And then I also wanted to hear a little more from the nurses about the fact that they will probably have two different spaces, because I know nurses have regular traffic and regular customers. You have students with chronic diseases and that sort of thing that have to visit the nurse on a daily basis. I have experience with this in my own family and lots of us do. So I'm just curious how that's going to be managed and, and understanding that we're going to be asking teachers to kind of take on a little bit higher responsibility, maybe for the cuts or the nosebleeds or that sort of thing. So two very different questions, but I wanted to get them out there while I had them written down and on my mind.
So nurses, do you want to go for the last question?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Jill, go.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So the idea is that we will have two separate office spaces, as mentioned before, an office space strictly for well-child visits, where your daily meds are seen, where the first aid visits are seen, where your, you know, students that you check in on daily that are healthy but still need medical care, a totally separate office space for that. And then another totally separate office space for anybody exhibiting signs or symptoms related that could potentially be related to COVID-19. The headaches, the sore throats, the runny nose, the body aches, coarse fever, all of that would be seen in a totally separate office area where isolation, where, you know, there would be room for, to isolate those students. Our assessment's going to look much different and we're receiving guidance from the state and from the CDC. And that's being, just like everything else, it's ever-changing, ever-evolving. We follow that very closely. We have our school physician following that. We follow the CDC guidelines. We're attending Maine DOE updates weekly. They were bi-weekly, now they're weekly with the school nurse consultant for the state through the DOE. CDC briefings, again, like, we're constantly keeping up to date. This isn't just our decision-making, but we're following those guidelines. But student visits will look much different and part of our staff education will reinforce that, that, you know, the non-urgent visit should really be discouraged and students shouldn't be accompanied to the office with friends. That should be, you know, very strict, you know, who's coming into the nurse's office and which way do they go, limiting the numbers, having them wait outside to determine which office they are appropriate to be seen in. And then, of course, us following our guidelines as a healthcare provider to ensure not only our state's safety, but the student-staff's safety too, in the way we're providing care. And that care is going to look so much different. So the sore throat, well, you know, it could potentially go home rather than back to class, very likely. The headache, same way. So it's going to be a much different assessment for us as nurses. Also, in regards to PPE, the state is providing PPE, but they first have to acquire it. And like everybody else across the world, those N95 masks, for example, are really hard to come by. And while the state would love to provide those to us, are they really going to be able to provide those to us? And as healthcare professionals, if you look at the numbers for the state of Maine, the positive cases, healthcare professionals make up 23% of the cases right now for the state. So it is frightening. And then we may not have the appropriate PPE. So in doing that, when we're being asked to potentially assess a student in close proximity and remove their mask to look at their sore throat, that assessment might not happen. It might be based on student report. And so it's going to just be really tricky, but we're going to be extremely cautious in the way we provide the care and make sure that we have separate areas, a clean area and an area for students or staff exhibiting symptoms.
And then the question about the scheduling is, yes, teachers would be in their classrooms for four or five days, following CDC guidelines and the, the main frameworks guidelines.
Thank you. I just felt like that needed some clarification. And before I mute for good, I want to circle back around to Nasser's original question, which is something that I actually have been hearing from neighbors a lot too, which is if we have a student test positive, what happens? And then I think he went even further to say, what if we have several students? And so I know that we might not know the answer, but we, we can probably get close to it. And.
I, I think we really do know the answer to that, and that is that we follow what CDC tells us to do. I know personally, I just experienced a COVID in my family. I have not been near them, but my grandsons and my son were just tested positive for COVID. They're fine. But they were contacted by CDC and given directions immediately about what to do, about self-isolation, retesting. The CDC is, is pretty on it about contacting people who test positive. So they also, if you remember last spring, they also contacted me right away and, and Jill right away and gave us guidance. So we would take our guidance from the CDC and we would do what they said.
All right, Phil.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry to go again. A couple more questions. And I know, Heather, you're going to get to some of the questions that people are writing in the chats, because there's some good ones there, so I don't want to reiterate those.
Yeah. Can I, can I just speak to that for one second before we get going, Phil?
Sure. Yes.
I am actually, as I'm listening, making a document. So these questions that people, there's a lot of conversation happening in the chat and it's worthy, and they're not going to be lost. And I, timing is getting tricky. I'm not sure how they're going to be answering, but I'm, I'm pacing them onto a document so that we can at least follow through at some, at some point. I just, I just want to let people know that.
Thanks, Heather. I'm glad you addressed that, because there are some good questions there. So my, two different questions that I don't think have been asked yet. One is, I think we've all been asked a lot about what can we do as volunteers? And, you know, we get that, I get that question quite frequently. People want to help in the community and whether it's from designing classroom spaces to outdoor spaces to, people have shared the Gorham volunteer initiative. Is there a way for people to do that? Or is there something for people to do who want to participate? So that's one question. And I know that's, you know, managing and working with volunteers is a lot of work too. And I know you guys are working a lot of things, but there is that need out there. And the, and the second question is actually really about cost. I, it's not really about the specifics here, but this is our first meeting since the governor announced the CARES Act funding. And I, first I want to say thank you to the community for overwhelmingly supporting our budget that just passed. But these initiatives you're talking about are going to cost a lot of money and weren't, you know, all included in the budget. I mean, some of it we did as much as we could, but there's unanticipated costs. Have you gotten any word from, you know, the governor's office on how that will be distributed and will it make a dent in what we need? So those are my two questions, volunteer and budget.
Okay, so I'll have to think about the volunteer piece and that would probably filter through our office. I have to think about that, Bill, okay? And get back to how that would work. So the funding, we did, we were given our number this, I guess, early this week, Marcy. Anyway, it was either late last week or early this week. And we are getting, there's a whole, as everything with the state, a formula, and it's based on number of, number of students, number of special ed students, number of free and reduced. There's a whole spreadsheet that goes on and on. And we, you get a certain amount for each of those students. So anyway, we ended up with 1,052,000 something, extra dollars, which sounds like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. And we're very thankful for that. And we had an administrative meeting today and, you know, just people kept saying, well, you know, we need to do this and we need to do this. So while it's a lot of money, I think it's, it's, it will go quickly. We have to be very careful with it. One of the things we know we need to do is the bus monitors. One of, another thing I think we need to do is to get some administrative assistance for our nurses, because they're going to be dealing with a lot of data that's coming in. We need somebody to be able to check those self-assessment reports every day. So those are two big things. There's some technology issues that we have to deal with. So, so we're very thankful for that money and we will, we will spend it wisely. It has to be spent by December 30th. So we talked about doing some building projects or something like that, and we just, there's not time to do that. If we hire people, it's only till December 30th, so it would be a very part-time, temporary position. And it can't be anything that was already in our budget this year that we, that we are replacing with. So, so there are some requirements that we have to follow, but, but we're very thankful for that funding and it will help as we proceed through these next couple of months.
Great. Thank you, Donna.
I would say if anybody, Phil, right now has ideas for how they would like to volunteer, what they, they could call, they could call my office and leave the information with Jen and then we could figure it out.
Okay. I am just, wow, overwhelmed, as I know everybody is. I would like to just pause for a moment. Are there any other comments from school board members? It looks like we've had some good discussion. Here's where I would like to go. I'd like to acknowledge the time. We're at 8:35. There, I've already copied two or three pages and I've just found out that I can somehow save them. But of, of questions from people that have been put into the chat, I'm sure there's, there's questions that are not into the chat. I, I think there's no way that we can vote on any of this without further conversation and hearing from the public. And I don't expect that to happen within a few minutes. So I'm opening it to the school board and to Donna to figure out the next steps right now on, on how we should proceed. Like I said, I don't think we're at a point, I think we're at our designated stopping point. I don't think we're at a point to vote. I don't think we've heard from the people in the meeting who we wanted to give a chance to speak. So we can either commit to more time and give a timeframe and now shift over to some of the questions in the, in the chat room. So I'm open to, I don't want to take too long to talk about this, but to school board members on your thoughts on that.
Heather, this is Phil. I'd like to, assuming everyone agrees, hear from people. I guess, you know, we did let people know that they could speak after this agenda item. And so the people who have waited, you know, maybe we don't get to vote on it tonight, but I, I do think we should let people who want to speak tonight on this topic speak. I think it'll be helpful for us to hear that.
Absolutely. So you're okay with going a little bit longer and later?
I agree with Phil.
Okay. Anybody else?
Anybody else? This is Kimberly, and I agree. I think people set this time aside and, and we let them know that they have a chance to share their thoughts and concerns. And I think it also is useful to, to get their thoughts out there on the sooner end for, for future, you know, as the planning continues to go on.
Okay. Laura Hope, Nasser.
Yes, we can stay longer. And I said in my chat that those staff who have read the questions already, and if they can address those questions quickly right away, I think they should, they should be, no particular order, but address the ones that you have answers for.
Okay. Hope and.
Yeah, I agree. I think if, if they've made it this far in the meeting, we should take some comments and, and get some input.
Okay. And Laura, are you okay with this?
Oh, I'm on mute. Yes, I agree. We should hear from the people. They've waited a long time to speak, so they're deserving of that.
Okay. I'm going to just start from the beginning and read them out loud. Chola Foot has said, would it be appropriate to ask why the AA half-day Wednesday BB schedule was not chosen? Is this due to staff PD or Friday afternoon? Could staff PD be done while cleaning takes place on Wednesday afternoons? Consistency of exposure, consistency of learning seems like it would work better if children were attending on consecutive days?
So I don't know if any of the principals want to. There we go again. But we did talk about doing that. And again, there was, we felt it was more beneficial for students to at least come every other day rather than to come two days in a row and then be off on the next two days. We talked to Perry about Wednesdays and the benefit of, you know, having a whole day to clean. And he felt that his staff could handle the cleaning and disinfecting, not the cleaning, but the disinfecting and sanitizing after school each day, during and after school each day on Monday through Thursday. So we did talk about both plans, but just all agreed that the ABAB we thought would be more beneficial for our students.
Great. Rebecca Roth wrote, thank you, Donna, for your presentation. Can you provide a bit more detail on the yellow plan? One, are the two days full or half-days in school?
Full days.
If they are half-days, why? So full days. What is the plan for the two, three days when kids are at home?
The two, three days, I believe that will be different at each school, but there will be, I don't know, maybe, Troy, do you want to talk about what your plan is? Your plan's a little bit different.
Sure, I can. And it's, obviously, it's outlined with the big lettered word draft over the top of it. So we are currently working on, in an effort to, there's a couple of things, because I've read through the chat as well. And, and somewhere near it said, you know, it's really a lot to think that people are going to teach live in person in the same day, do some type of remote teaching. I think that's really not that realistic of a thought. It's also, students are home on that off day and they do need to be continuing to work and learn. So there'll be some aspect of the content teachers providing that instruction during that time. It might be extension activities, research, you know, some of it will be kind of some typical homework. But that's kind of, that is a, that's a plan. For us, what we're really looking at is, in order, it all kind of goes together in the podding idea of trying to keep the smallest groups and pod sizes. One idea we're floating around and it's not set in stone yet, we're still working on it, is the idea of having our allied arts teachers be the remote teaching kind of option, the direct instruction for that day that students are home. That's not to say there's not some content area work to still be done by students, but the direct but the direct contact would be limited, potentially, to the allied arts teachers. That way, it's kind of hard to have people blowing in trumpets and horns and think that an airborne thing is not going to fly around the room. So it's really hard to keep the integrity, I think, of our band, our music, our phys ed, even our art room, you know, trying to disinfect between every group of kids that touch markers or paintbrushes or whatever it is. So they seem to be the group that has the most potential, because they also see about 150 kids per quarter versus the 35. So it's, it's really kind of causing a lot of potential cross-pollination for staff and for students and, and all of that. So right now, that is one potential plan that we have at the middle school. So it would also take out a class, so to speak, during the regular day. So instead of seven blocks, there'd be six. It would help, I think, mitigate some of that later kind of arrivals and the later, maybe some of the earlier needs for dismissals. So that, that's one idea that we have, and it's really, I think, helpful and beneficial to everybody on a couple of ways. And one is, it allows for more podding. It limits the need for students to be traveling through the building from one room to another. We've talked with our world language teachers. They would be obviously working, you know, in school, in person, and they would be, at least in the fifth and sixth grade, traveling to the classrooms that kids are in, as opposed to having them travel to the, their, what might be on the other end of the building, a classroom. So this all kind of goes together. I don't think any of it can happen in isolation. And if we have our allied arts teachers doing that job, I think it eliminates some of the potential feedback we were getting from last year of my, my students checking in with way too many people in a day. You know, they're trying to get to eight different teachers and all of this stuff. And I, and I know our allied arts teachers were feeling as though they were not a priority, which I think for emergency remote learning, that might have been okay, but I don't think that's okay to continue on that path. So I think this would really value their programming, and it would allow them to keep the integrity of it without really changing it as much. So that's some of our current thinking. It's also going to be slightly different for that whole group of students and families that opt out and opt to be at, for remote learning. We're trying to identify a team of teachers, as Donna had said earlier, to kind of meet those needs. So there's a lot of work going on in that, and I just think that we have to be very realistic about what we expect from our teachers when they have kids in person. And I think on the same feeling, the learning can't stop on that one day. There still has to be learning going on on the other day in our content areas as well. So that's some of the work and the progress and what, where we're currently at talking about it.
Thanks, Troy.
A third part to her question is, has the school considered specific technology like Swivel for the teachers to use? And training for teachers and how to improve in doing interactive Zoom lessons?
So Noel, do you want to say anything about that? Are you still on?
Yes, I'm still on. We looked into the other product, I forget what the name of it is. But, you know, at the beginning of the school, we set aside the first week of school to have teachers be mentors to other teachers of how things went well in our springtime and what could be approved. I also noticed a couple of questions in the chat. iPads and devices will be available at the very beginning of school and be ready for the, the students. We have talked about doing one or two grades at a time. Again, you know, all this is talking, so at that time, they would get their devices. And the other thing is Zoom versus Google Meet. Thanks to our new little budget there, we're talking about Zoom today, an alternative. Google Meet is, is trying like heck to catch up to Zoom, and the one advantage with Google Meet is the fact that all the teachers have been using it, so they're very familiar with it. However, if it doesn't have the same capabilities as Zoom, such as breakout rooms and, and such, then obviously, we will go to Zoom and use some of that funding that was provided to us to pay for.
Kathy Stankert is going to pull together a committee of teachers and tech integrators to have a conversation about Zoom versus Google. So that will be happening probably next week, I would assume.
Thank you for that. Eliza Matheson asks, for the families who opt in for full revote for the first semester, will they be separated out from the remote learning portion of the hybrid model?
Yes.
Will the number of opt-in remote online classes be based on demand?
I'm not sure what that means. The number of classes? What, what we're thinking is...
Maybe she's here, and she could clarify?
Let me just say what we're thinking about at Poncove and middle school is staff would be assigned to students who were doing remote learning, and, and they would be essentially their own mini-class, and they would do their remote learning program. In Poncove, it might be a multi-age situation where a teacher might have, you know, a few students in one grade and a few students in another grade, but they would be assigned to that teacher for the semester. So that, they would be doing their remote learning with that, with that teacher.
Hey.
I hope that makes sense.
Does the district have universal social emotional screening in place to best assess the needs of all students?
That's what the committee is going to work on when they get together.
In the remote learning setting, will administrators require virtual meetings between staff and students? I don't know if required. I think it says needed. This is from Jen McVay.
Can you read that again?
In the remote learning setting, will administrators require virtual meetings with, between staff and students?
Well, I think, I think there'd be a lot of virtual meetings between staff and student in that remote, yeah. If that's, if that's, that's how I understand the question. But yes, that would, they would be that, those students' teachers. So yes, there would be a lot of meeting.
Joan Moriarty already asked, what happens if the parent doesn't complete the form that the nurses require? And they just won't be able to come to school? It's part of the requirement, you can't come through the building.
That's correct.
Yep. Melanie Thomas asks, could someone explain the different semesters to us? If a child commits to a first semester of remote learning, what months would that consist of?
Okay, we have a date today, it's in January. Jeff, do you remember that date? January?
Typically, the end of the third week in January.
Okay, and then this is a question clarification, that each school will not check student temperature before entering the schools. Are you stating that it's up to the parents? As of now, that's the new guideline, so correct.
That's correct.
What about the children's parents who leave to work before their child even wakes up? Is it up to the younger child to check their own temperature?
Well, hopefully, if the child is young enough, there's somebody there that's watching them or can help with that. And if they're old enough, I don't know, we haven't really talked about whether they can do their own self-assessment, but I would imagine, I don't know if the nurses want to weigh in on that, but I imagine that if the child was old enough, they could do their own self-assessment. They would have to be trained, but, any nurses want to weigh in on that?
Yep. One other thing we had talked about, as for the parents who would be doing the assessments at home, we are looking into some form of communication that parents would then report back to the school what their, if their child had symptoms, and no, their child's not coming to school today, or their child was cleared to go. And so one of the tracking methods we would do is to look, did certain student, if they weren't screened, if we don't have a yes or a no from them, then the nurses are going to find those students, do a screening. But we would also be in touch with the families to let them know that their child hadn't been screened that day. So if they clear screening with us, they go to class. If they don't clear screening with us, then we would send them home.
Would students, would we accept students doing their own self-assessment?
I think probably, I mean, we would definitely have to probably discuss it more, but I would think at the high school level, if students, especially the students who would be driving themselves to school, who are old enough to be able to know, do I feel unwell today? Do I have a fever? Am I showing any symptoms? I mean, I think at some point, that might have to be the honor system of that student coming into school.
And that honor system is so incredibly important, and I have been advocating for this piece for a long time. I just want to get my opinion out there. It is not the recommendation of the CDC nor the main DOE that we do these screenings upon arrival any longer. However, that does create some, you know, gaps here. So the idea to do them upon arrival was to prevent students from entering, and staff, from entering the building, even, you know, stepping foot into the building to minimize that exposure. Will we capture very many? Probably not through this, and that's why it's not recommended right now through the, you know, those groups. But it, you know, by not doing it upon arrival, we are really relying again on the compliance of everyone at home. And again, we all need to be that team player and meet our expectations. But, you know, once they're in the building, and by the time we've tracked the data to see who has and has not completed that screening, by the time I have that data and get into that student's classroom or staff member's classroom, and it's third or fourth period, and how do I explain that? That, you know, I'm sorry that our school was exposed. We have a positive screening here, and the child or staff member's been here for three to four hours. So it gets really tricky, and it does create some room for gaps and for students conducting their own screenings, things like that. There are, you know, we don't have all the answers here, but it is a bit tricky. So we are following the guidelines, but it does leave some room for, you know, potential exposure.
Right. Katie McGovern asks, the red, yellow, green matrix is guidance from the state and the district that makes its own decision, correct? She's looking for clarification. That's correct.
Yes.
Yep. Melanie Tednison asks, can someone bring up an expectation that if families travel, that they quarantine if traveling to state areas with high numbers? Has that been addressed?
Yeah, so we have outlined in our employee handbook, and I believe in our parent-student handbook as well, that will be put out there. So, yes, we have addressed that.
Okay, thank you. Maureen Clancy asks, if high school students attend PaaS, will that work with the schedule? Will that be happening? Oh, I think somebody needs to put their, there we go. Go ahead, Donna.
Jeff said to address the PaaS issue.
Yes, our, what we have in mind for any of the models of learning that we have will work with PaaS. And I've been in communication with Kevin Stofen, who's the director of PaaS, and he's well aware of what we're planning on doing. So, yep, it will work.
Great. Joan Moriarty, the main office administrative secretaries see the kids first. Will we be expected to do the policing when they arrive at school if the student is not wearing a mask or complying with the CDC requirements?
So I understand that at the high school and the middle school, they are purchasing a check-in system for their late, the students who are late, so they can scan themselves in. And so the secretaries, the administrative assistants will not be responsible for any close contact with those students, and they certainly will not be responsible, although they might remind students to wear masks. But that, that would be the administrator's responsibility.
Okay.
Did that answer the question, Joan?
Hopefully, she's still here.
She is.
Okay.
Yes, but I just, I guess it, it does answer my question, but sometimes the administrators aren't here to enforce any of that. So, anyway, that's, that was my question.
Remind them, but that's where... As I could go. Okay, thank you.
Lindsay Waite, there was a question actually from Heather Bryant, who wanted to know about outside instruction as long as possible. It seems like the kids could be mask-free if outside in space. Are they going to be required to be masked outside at recess?
We haven't talked about that. We haven't talked about that, so...
So that's a good thing to follow through with. Thank you for bringing that up.
The guidelines and the CDC requirements, they say students will wear masks, they don't say if they're outside. So they don't differentiate between inside and outside. So, you know, on the playground, it's going to be difficult to keep social distancing if students do go out on the playground. If it's a learning situation, it's a little bit different, because you may give students their spaces to work in. So I think it would depend on the situation, and we will talk more about that. We haven't gotten to recess yet.
Okay. Lindsay Waite, is recess happening? That's a question we haven't gotten there yet. Playtime, physical activity outside the classroom?
Yeah, so let's, Jason, are you still with us? And what are you thinking about recess? Have you had that discussion?
I am here. So we haven't had detailed, we've had quite a few discussions about recess, but of course, we're going to be looking at the guidelines at the time. Certainly, there's every intention of providing outside time and playtime. Exactly what that will look like? More information to come on that. But there will certainly be, you know, the, the decisions will be based on the guidelines. Will we, will we use equipment? Or will we provide opportunities for play and physical activity in a different way? And we're looking into that.
Okay. Lindsay Waite asks, how will teachers facilitate online learning when they are also in the classroom five days a week? That seems like two whole jobs.
And I think Troy addressed that in his answer. Jeff, do you want to talk about that at the high school? Did we lose Jeff?
No, I'm, I'm here. So I, I don't have a solid answer for that right now. I mean, except, it sort of depends. I can imagine a number of different ways that it could work. For example, on a Monday, if a student, if the teacher is meeting with a group of kids, they can do some live instruction, record themselves, assign some homework that would last over a couple of days, and maybe some work to do at home for the next day as well. So I, I think that's one model. But, but I really don't know if that's the best model or the right model. One of the things that I think we have talked about on the school planning team is that whatever model we choose, we have to make sure that we can make it work for kids who cannot access the internet in real time because of family circumstances at home. So that becomes a little tricky, but it's, it's something we're dedicated to figuring out. I also think there's some unknowns in terms of, you know, I can, I can imagine, and a group of teachers and I have talked about some other ways to do this as well. There are a number of ways to do it, but they sort of depend on the ability, how much, how much traffic can our pipeline at school handle? It's sort of an unknown, and it's really hard to test it until you get into the situation to figure out. So that's another reason why having a slow glide path at the beginning of school to the start of real school is going to be important, because it's going to allow us to test out some different modalities, I think. But the short answer is, I don't know. It depends. It's very much on our radar as a question we have to answer.
And I know at the, at the elementary school, we've talked in a team about, you know, students being in daycare and not being able to expect them when, when they're on their off day to be tuning into classes, because they, who knows where they'll be. And, you know, day, I don't think it's realistic to expect daycare providers to be having kids tune into their, their classes. So I know that I've heard some of the Poncove teachers talk about preparing some videos or checking in, checking in with them. So I, I think those questions are very much still in acknowledgement that obviously, a teacher can't be teaching in the classroom all day and doing a remote learning situation at home all day. So that's just not... So that's just not going to work. So, so schools are talking about, I'm working with teachers to work on those plans.
So I guess that, I just want to reiterate for that is that that's in the conversation. It's acknowledged that's, that's, you know, very much in the awareness. And we do still have time before we go back to school. And that's one of the big conversations that will be happening about how to manage that. Bree Gallagher writes, "Yes, two jobs for sure. I would like to see Fridays for everyone, which would allow teachers some time to plan their in-person and remote lessons, including creative learning videos and responding to emails from parents, students regarding..." I heard that one of the reasons for having the half-day was to try to maximize in-class connection. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The in-person? Okay. Right, "Are teachers providing our own PPEs or will the school be able to help out with that?"
So the school, we will have some PP depending on how much we get. I, I think probably most teachers would prefer to wear a PPE of their choosing. But if not, we have, we will have some on hand to provide. I have a box of them in my office right now and more is coming, so.
Okay.
Masks.
Karen Dow asks, "What about subs if teachers have to isolate at home or if teachers' children have to isolate? How many days does isolation last to meet the guidelines once you are symptom-free?"
So.
Two questions.
Subs is going to be a huge problem. And we talk about that almost every A-team meeting. We realize, you know, on, on a good day in a regular, in a regular year, subs are an issue. So we know that that is going to be a problem. We're hoping that there are some community members out there that might be interested in substituting. And I would urge you to call our HR department at Central Office to sign up for subbing. If, obviously, if we don't have teachers in our classrooms, we can't, we can't have our kids in our classrooms. So it is, we know that it's going to be a huge issue. It's going to be a huge issue throughout the state. And one of our thoughts was to have teachers team up so that if a sub was in one of the, the alternate class, that the teacher that was there could help out. But we, we realized that the sub issue is going to be huge. It could shut us down. As far as the days coming back, we do have that outlined and it really is about main CDC guidance. But we, we have that outlined. There's a flow chart about that that will be in the handbooks.
Great.
And actually, if, if staff go on, onto the supporting documents for this meeting, you'll see that, the draft of that handbook. So you can, you'll see that there's a flow chart.
Okay. Bree Gallagher asks, "What about the presumptive positive case? Testing and contact tracing has been inconsistently available. Should our district have their own plan if a student's test positive or is presumptive positive, at least in the short term?"
Our plan is to follow the CDC guidelines. I don't know, nurses, do you have any other information on that?
Yeah, we definitely, we would be following the local health department recommendations. Depending on if we have a positive case from the CDC, they'll direct us to a minimum of about two to five days of closure to allow for contact tracing and to have us have a better understanding of the COVID situation impacting our schools. And then the closure would also help us to determine appropriate next steps, including if we would need to have an extended dismissal duration or if we would be able to safely return back to the buildings. But all guidance that we will be receiving is going to come directly from the CDC.
Great.
And I can tell you, the last time we had that, they were right on it, so.
Great. iPhone 81, I forget who that was. "Live stream, live stream the class and record or simply record the teaching?" Not sure exactly what that meant.
We've talked about the possibilities of, of doing some live streaming and I believe that some of the teachers might be going to try that. We're concerned about our capacity, which Jeff talked a little bit about giving us some time at the beginning of the year to test that out. I don't know if Noel or Jeff want to say anything else about that.
I mean, I think, I don't know, I don't think I have anything to add beyond what you just said and what I said before. Donna, I think there are just some unknowns and we're going to have to figure it out. And again, coming back to the idea of a longer-than-normal orientation period for students, which will also have the side benefit of allowing us to, I mean, it's one thing to talk about these ideas in theory and it's another thing to see what can actually work. So I think there would be tremendous advantages in, in trying some things and being a little bit experimental. So that's the best that I have for right now.
Noel, do you want to add anything about our capacity?
I really don't have anything to add to it. As far as looking at the, again, picking on one application, Google Meet, it looks like the specs, we have no issues whatsoever. But then again, you have to add, if we're going to have 50% of our classes full, how, how that adds to it. If I was a betting man and had to bet the house on it, I think we're going to be okay. But again, you know, it's one of the things that we've never done before. So, you know, I don't want to, you know, say, hey, everything's going to be fine and then we go down this road and find some hiccups. It's great that we're hopefully going to stagger this a little bit and like Jeff said, test, test out a couple of the things and see if they're available.
Okay, there was a question for Perry. "Are ventilation systems being checked and cleaned this summer?"
Yeah, we, we do an annual cleaning of, of filters and maintenance every summer regardless of COVID. And I just wanted to add that we will be adjusting the outside air, fresh air dampers to their fullest open position to bring in as much outside air as possible.
Thank you. "If teachers have to isolate at home because of our own children's illness, will this be permitted to teach? Will we be permitted to teach from home? Runny noses and coughs in young children are almost constant April to, or August to April."
That's really going to depend on the grade level and situation. It would, you know, if we could find a sub that would come in and be with the class and the teacher could teach from home, then it might work. Or really, it will depend on the situation, the grade level. We would certainly try to work with that, but I can't guarantee that, that we can make that work.
Okay. John Voldt wants to know, "As soon as you're, are able, it would be helped to know what happens if a student tests positive, even in a general way? Just like we all know what happens in a fire drill." So just some information that somebody would like. "If a teacher contracts COVID, will we be able to have substitute teachers? What are the responsibilities for the teacher who becomes ill?" I think we've addressed that. "In the event that we have to go 100% remote, Lisa Millantin urges technology department to purchase Zoom licenses for students and teachers." I think that we're, that's something we're looking into. And we're also very aware of the Google, which is updating and getting better from LEDs. I'm the last recorded in the chat. "Do you have plans for consistent guidelines for attendance and online expectations on remote days?"
We will be working on those, but we will have those expectations, yes.
"Will there be more consistency and an expectation for live online learning or will it be homework or taped classes?"
I think it will be a combination. I don't know if any of the principals want to answer that. I'm assuming they mean the remote learning day. I think we've talked a lot about that, so.
Okay. I think what we'll do is, there's been a few requests for spoken questions. I've been told that this will automatically save these questions and maybe we can address the rest of the chat questions later. I'd like to give till 9:30 and then a hard stop. Our administrators have been working all day. This is a very late night. Not to say that this isn't important. I'm trying to balance the needs of everyone right now. And so we're going to pause with the chat and go to in-person questioning. If somebody wants to verbally raise their hand or not verbally, but use the hand feature. Elizabeth Yarrington, you have the floor. Go ahead and yourself?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Here, so I'll try to make it quick. So I'm, my name's Liz Yarrington. I'm in English with the high school. And I'm also on the, on the high school fall planning team. So I wanted to speak as a teacher, but also as a parent of two young kids, one of whom is right here. While I really want to get back to school in the building, I just want to put it out there that the hybrid model presents really significant logistical challenges for teachers like me whose kids under the hybrid model will be without care for three days a week if they're in public school. So staff like me in this position, I think, have been under tremendous stress thinking about options for how to care for our kids and also in the classroom. But I know that the hybrid model isn't something we can just take off the table. So I think there are three things that I have thought of that I think are some practical choices that the district could make that would make teaching possible for people like me. So I'm, I'm hoping that the board would consider these three things. So the first is, the fifth day in school in the school week should be in line with our neighboring school districts. This day is going to be Wednesday in South Portland and Portland. And I know that we thought it would be Friday, but that's changed. I think that we, we need to be agile here and I really think we should adopt Wednesday as our fifth day as well. This will keep us in line with the PaaS schedule, which has always been a top priority for us because it impacts so many of our students. But it will also make a significant impact for people like me, who are parents of kids in neighboring school districts. In the high school English department alone, there are four teachers who have children attending school in different districts. All of those districts will have Wednesday as the fifth day. So as far as I know, there's nothing special about Friday. I know that's what we chose, but I hope that we can be flexible about this and change our plan to be in line with neighboring districts. I think it will make a big difference for people who are in my position. So that's the first thing. The second thing, the fifth day in the week, I think, should be, as it will be for South Portland and Portland, a staff-only day. We should adopt that as our model as well. And I'll say more about why I think we should do that in a moment. The third thing is, with the fifth day in the week as a staff-only day, if we can adopt that, parents like me and any adult in the building who feels that they should be, would benefit from it, should be able to work from home that day. We did it all spring. We know that it's possible. Teachers could then be planning and attending meetings from home while we care for our own children. Getting childcare for my kindergartner, for instance, for two days instead of three days would be a significant help financially and just logistically. Let's see. And while this would be helpful for me as a parent, I think that it would benefit all staff. As teachers know from our experience, this spring, remote learning takes an enormous amount of planning. But in a hybrid model, we're planning for in-person learning as well as remote learning. Teachers need more planning time under this model. I think the fifth day is a common sense time for this to happen. And while it pains me to take away any possible in-class time for students, even five or 10 minutes, the reality is that the fifth day in the week will only happen for each group of students every other week. That comes out to one half-day out of 10. So I think planning time for teachers and flexibility for teacher-parents are good reasons for us to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Halleck, you can unmute yourself and speak?
Thanks, Heather. I'm sorry, I'm not on camera. My camera's not working. I'm just also, I'm kind of in line with what Elizabeth just said. And as a parent and somebody who also works in a school in the area, I'd like to, I'm just wondering if there's a better way to cohort our students? With a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday? There's not really an opportunity for, A, teachers to have a break or the building to have a break. But if our students went to school Monday, Tuesday in one cohort and then in Elizabeth's, in an Elizabeth's model, Thursday, Friday, yes, it would mean three days off or three days at home for half the school and two days in a row and then two days together. But it would cohort them better. And with a, with a Wednesday break, which I like, it gives, it allows the buildings to be cleaned more substantially. So if you have the same group of students there on Monday and Tuesday, the buildings are all cleaned and then the next group is there Tuesday, Friday, or I'm sorry, Thursday, Friday, then you've co-horted that next group on Thursday and Friday. And if the building isn't quite as clean or something's missed, it's still the same group of people that'll be in the building on consecutive days. So, and that is something that we're, we're doing at our school. It's, it's a better cohort. And I'm just wondering if, if there's any thought to that because I feel like all we're doing now is just getting all of them in in the school consecutive days. And there's really, there's just so much more chance for spread and infection. And it just does, it seems like a less safe way to send my child back to school. And, and I'm having a really hard time sending her back to school, period. And then to just know that she's going to be exposed to everybody because it doesn't really matter if she's there on Monday and Wednesday or Tuesday and Friday. She's going to be exposed to everybody because there's no break. There's no opportunity for that building to be cleaned. And our janitorial staff is amazing. I've worked with them in the parent associations, but there's no way that they can get those buildings that clean in that short amount of time. They'd have to work from the moment the bell rang until the moment the bell rang in the morning. And that's just, doesn't seem fair to them. And what if one of them gets sick? And then there's a spread through the janitorial staff. I mean, I think we're just opening up. It's just really bad. I just think it's just not, I think we just need to cohort them better and that will just make everybody safer. And I like Elizabeth's idea of a full break in. And I like Elizabeth's idea of a full break in the middle of the week with nobody in the building. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Jennifer. I don't see any other hands raised. John Delisle?
You got it.
Did I?
You got it, yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to throw out some kind of information, some data. I'm not a doctor or health professional whatsoever, but I do like my data. So the first confirmed case of COVID in Maine happened on March 12. And the next day, March 13, that was the last day that students and staff were in the school. And since then, since school's been closed down, Maine has had 38, over 3,800 positive cases. And more than 2,000 of those have happened in Cumberland County. Of the 121 deaths that have happened from COVID, 68 of those remainers were from Cumberland County. Right now, we're at 398 active cases, and 204 of them are in Cumberland County. Those 398 cases, active cases, that number is similar to what we saw in April and May when school was closed. So I think my concern is if we're seeing same, the same number of active cases we saw in April and May while school was, while school was closed down, why is it safe now to return in a month or so? Personally, I feel like, and I know that administration has done so much with looking at the hybrid model. And I'm very thankful for all the work that's put into that. I just worry about going back to school. I miss my students. I miss my colleagues. I miss, you know, all the things that we took for granted before COVID happened. But I'm really nervous about myself getting sick, my family member getting sick, a colleague getting sick, students getting sick. And personally, and that's just my opinion, it would be great if we could spend some time looking at professional development for remote learning rather than just a hybrid learning. And that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you for that, John. I'm going to call on Wynne, and then Mark Ash is after Wynne. Go ahead, Wynne.
Okay, as you probably know, I had all spiel prepared before this. But in the interest of time, I won't go into all of it. I'd like to, I think that John has really hit on, and I think this is more for the public. I'm kind of speaking as the president of this association, is that the teachers are nervous, very nervous. And they are also, they also understand how important it is to get back in the classroom. And they'd love nothing more to be able to do that. But, you know, there are so many different things that have come up in this meeting and once again have brought up more anxiety, at least for me. And I was part of the district committee. And, you know, I think it was a great plan. I think that we did the best we could. But it didn't necessarily alleviate any of our fear, any of my fears. And I think Elizabeth alluded to how are we going to protect teachers? And she, you know, I remember one of the things that was talked about were Plexiglas barriers for high, high-traffic areas. And there's no, there's no higher traffic area than our classrooms. And are we going to have Plexiglas barriers? Is that really something that the district can afford and to do? You know, I know that, and of course, the idea of aides were brought up on buses. And, you know, are they going to be able to really enforce masks? I mean, kids on buses are, you know, they're on buses. You know how they behave. We all were on buses at one time. And is that really realistic for us to think that an aide is going to be able to keep all those kids from, you know, from not taking their masks off? Now, we talked about substitutes, and that's just a huge issue. And I would have to suggest that the district is going to have to go back into the substitute handbook and rewrite it for things like, you know, make sure the kids wear masks, make sure that desks are disinfected, and so on. I would continue to talk about a lot of different issues, but I know that people's time is short. But I think, you know, I like to say that when we all started teaching, the last thing we ever thought was that we'd be doing active shooting drills. And now here we are. I don't think any of us ever imagined that we'd be donning masks and going back into schools during a pandemic. It's just not what we really signed up for. You know, I also think about, we have come up with a plan. We've done a great job coming up with a plan. I'll remind people of what President Trump said in January, on January 22, when the first COVID case in the United States came up. He said, what is it that, we have a plan, you know, and it's a good plan. And he went on to say that in another interview, that it's going to be handled very well. Well, that's all fine. And I imagine this all may be fine if everyone follows the rules. And, you know, and if, and if we are all going back to school, you know, I look forward to the very first school board meeting and town council meeting in district chambers the next time you decide to meet, because I think that seems only fair. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wynne. Mark Ash. And then it is close to 9:30. I'm going to, Mark to speak and Marsden to speak. And then I think we're going to call it for the night. So, Mark.
Thank you, Heather. First, I'd just like to thank the board. I can't imagine the amount of time, thought, energy that the board has put into this. I know it's, we are lucky to have a very thoughtful board. So I just wanted to say I appreciate all the time and work you've put into this. My first comment is just a quick one about the start of the school year. I was a little bit surprised to learn that we were going to start before Labor Day, if I, at least if I understood it right. I think in the past several years, we've started after Labor Day. And thinking about being in hot classrooms with no AC, with masks on. It might, it might be, in terms of returning to the school, maybe as late in September as possible. Might be, might be advisable. But my main comment would echo what some of my colleagues have said. And that's about the hybrid schedule. I'm personally concerned about the hybrid model being worth returning to the building for. I'm just not sure that the educational benefits will necessarily be that great compared to the potential health effects of the risk to our students, our staff, the community. And I think that we should consider further reducing the number of students in the building. I know the district has sent out surveys over the past couple of weeks that focus on identifying which students and staff can't physically be in the building for health reasons. However, I would encourage the district to instead ask which students must be in the building and to only have those students physically in school next year and have everyone else be remote. We know that there are students who rely on special services, have IEP needs, 504 needs, who would be dramatically better off in the building. I'm sure this is the case of the other schools, but I know at the high school, we know which students really struggled with remote learning last year, whether there are academic reasons or emotional reasons. We already know who these students are. So I would suggest a different approach to the hybrid, which would be having almost everybody be remote and having the students in the building who actually really need in-person support. And teachers quite possibly could even be available there for students who are, you know, 100% remote, like almost all kids would be. They might be there to have a kid come in who needs some help to answer a question. I would imagine teachers would be much more comfortable being in the building under those circumstances. And I think this would make many other problems much easier to address as well. Busing, lunch concerns, teacher childcare. This would protect our students better, our families, and also would protect one of our town's most valuable assets much better, which is our school staff. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Amanda.
Hi, everybody. Amanda Marsden. I teach kindergarten at Pond Cove. First of all, thank you to everybody that took the time out of your summers to do all of this planning, especially those people on the committees. My husband banned me from doing any more committees, so with two kids under three, so I wasn't able to join you this time around. But my biggest concern, aside from just being in school in general, is around planning time. And a lot of that has been discussed already, what Liz had shared. And I know there are several people in our building who have students that go to school in other districts. And I support fully moving to the Wednesday date rather than the Friday for planning. And with that being said, a full day for planning. I think we're really creating a system that's unsustainable if we expect teachers and staff to be planning for in-person instruction and whatever the remote will look like. With a half a day on a Friday afternoon, I can say for sure I am cooked on Friday afternoon. And it will be incredibly challenging to collaborate and really have meaningful work that'll inform instruction throughout the coming week on a Friday afternoon. Also, I really think that, excuse me, on any given day at Pond Cove, at least, we get 40 minutes to plan each day, and that is it. So to then add on this additional task of splitting up groups and differentiating to the needs of those students, and also really taking into account how important those first six, eight, 10 weeks of school are going to be and how everything is going to continue to be changing, the least we could be thrown is additional planning time that would adequately support our teachers and our staff. So I appreciate everybody so very much for your thoughtfulness. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm sorry, my voice is the last one. You get to hear. So, thanks.
Okay. I think we need to close this for this evening. There was a lot of information, a lot of thoughts, a lot of input, a lot to think about. I'm going to make a motion that we table the vote. We're clearly not prepared as a board, I believe. And so I'm just going to go through and confirm with each board member that you are okay tabling it or commenting on that. And we'll start with Kimberly, and I suppose, and the rest of the, the rest of the agenda. We have policies, and so to table those. Kimberly, can you speak to that?
Yes, I concur. Tabling at this point is a good idea.
Elizabeth.
Yes, I think we need to table it for now.
Okay, Hope.
I agree with tabling it. I just want to note that I don't know that we were voting on anything concrete, like we're all going back to school, you know, we were voting on a general framework. So my question is, if we're tabling it, what does that mean? Are we coming back to discuss it more? Are we asking for clarifications? Like, what will the next step be? But I'm okay with tabling it. So for that purpose, yes.
I guess I'd just like to speak to that, is that I'm not, I feel like there might not have been a chance for people, and I would like to give just a little bit of time for people to write in an email or share their thoughts with us. I feel, I agree with you that we're voting on something general and nothing specific. Yet I think it's important for us to feel like we've heard everybody. And I feel like because of the timing of the evening and the way the meeting has elicited so much input, that I don't feel like, I haven't even been able to keep up and read all the chats. And so I haven't been able to keep all that in there. And so I would just like the opportunity to be able to make sure that I've heard everybody's thoughts and opinions first. So that is my reason for wanting to table it. That's all. I guess I should suppose, Donna, are we on a timeframe with this? Are we able to?
We do have school opening coming up, and.
Right, which means we would need a special business meeting potentially in two weeks.
And, and would you recommend that we continue with our planning? Should we stop planning then? And I'm worried about being ready for the beginning of school.
If we table this.
The plan is a very general plan. It's not a specific plan. So I think to work within the framework of that plan is what we're going to end up doing anyway. It would give us some direct, we need some direction at this point about, you know, and we do have school coming up. So knowing, you know, we don't have to make a decision tonight, you know, what each little detail will be, but knowing that the general plan is in place to move forward.
So for us to vote for the plan does not mean that, I'm thinking of some of the concerns that came up. It does not limit us from, correct, potentially changing things or having the conversations of concerns that came up tonight.
Correct. So I'm going to do a 180 because while I do feel it's really important that we hear from the public and that we answer questions and we continue conversation, I felt coming into this meeting that we were voting on something general that we needed to have in place for school. I was swayed a little bit. I do really want to hear comment. However, I'm back to my original position that we need to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, I'm starting to think that as well in the regards to give the administration some time to move forward with this and have a general plan. It also sounds like through conversations I've had with you, Donna, that now it gets down to, with this bigger, more general plan, now it gets down to the buildings and how do, how do they make it work in the nitty-gritty with the concerns that are being heard? Okay, so that's Hope. Kimberly?
Could, Heather, could I just, so I guess I feel a little uncomfortable with the calendar piece that we, you know, we voted for that right off the bat. But then we've heard a lot of commentary, and there was a lot in the chat about that. And I feel uncomfortable right now with that piece, I guess. Just putting it out there. I don't know. I don't know. I just, I guess there was, I feel like we didn't hear all the positions before we voted.
Good point.
So, comment. I think one of the questions people in the chat is asking, I think the biggest thing they're asking about the Wednesday. And before asking about the Wednesday, I asked, I think, earlier on the calendar, before I even asked my religious day, I mean, Elizabeth read my mind, of course, naturally, she always does that. And so the question I ask, is it possible to change? And I'm asking the same question after the discussion, is it possible to change? If it's not possible to change, why have discussion? And I think it is the Department of Education, it is the state, it is the CDC. We are, we are opening school, so. I'm not saying that from my perspective, it's from the state's perspective. Like it or not, students have to go back to school. Just like me, with the city hall, I mean, I don't want to go, but I have to go earn my money. And they're set protocols how to do that. As Chris Hope on the Tom Cost is beautifully said at one of the meetings and references to pizza. The plan is that we have pizza. The question is, do we want pepperoni pizza, vegetable pizza, what kind of pizza do we want? So as long as Donna can say, or the administration can say that we are flexible to accommodate ourselves, just as the virus is accommodating or not accommodating to us is constantly changing, I think we should vote it and go forward.
Okay, thank you for that, Nancy.
Add that language to there somehow.
Yep. Phil, do you have a comment, or Laura?
I, I'll let Phil go first.
Go ahead, Laura.
Oh, I was just going to say, I feel comfortable voting on the plan. Oh, I was just gonna say, I feel comfortable voting on the plan, knowing that the plan is subject to change, but giving it in the administration's control to construct that plan and continue their work and not derail them.
Phil, and then Hope, I see your hand.
Yeah, so I, I'd agree. And just to be clear what we're voting on, I'm reading the, you know, I've read it carefully, the framework for returning to classroom instruction. And it's a, it's a general plan. It's, it's what we would all want from my perspective. I think a lot of work, whether it's Wednesdays or Fridays, or Monday, Tuesday, you know, the specifics I think need to be, continue to be thought through, particularly from what we've heard tonight. But this framework really sets forth about if we go and when we go, what it looks like, what are the health considerations, how do we test? Hand hygiene, I mean, it's, it's the kind of thing that I felt very comfortable with supporting tonight beforehand. The specifics, I agree, we can continue to talk about it, but I'd hate to see that framework linger when we only have four weeks left before people need to go to school, and the administrators will continue, and teachers, I would hope, continue to have these conversations about the specifics. So I'm comfortable voting on this framework tonight.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Hope.
So, so I just wanted to follow up with respect to the Wednesday. So I, I understood the explanation was that all of Cumberland County was going to use Wednesday, and then some schools went off and did something different. So now we're in the situation where, do we follow them? We may, it sounds like there's a good amount of preference for Wednesday. It seems somewhat absurd that all, that Cumberland County can't just say, this is what we're all going to do to fix this problem, because it's, it's a shared problem. And you, you want to respond to that, Donna? And I have one other point to make, but go ahead, Donna.
So I just want to say that we all agreed, all agreed, except for Portland wasn't there to Fridays. Then Portland went with Wednesday, and because Portland went with Wednesday, South Portland went with Wednesday. And I don't know how Falmouth ended up changing, but anyway, that's the, that's a sequence of events, so.
Got it. Yeah, I, I, I see, I see that, I understand how it happened. I'm just saying, let's not make it a battle of wills, you know.
Definitely not a battle of wills.
And then my other point was to, John Delisle made a point that I've been saying all along, which is, we had one case in March, and we shut down. And now we're talking about all these different, you know, we have 300 active, over almost 400 active cases now. So I sort of see everything except the remote option as sort of a fiction somewhat, and that we're going to be going in. And I'm just hoping and, and believing that we're going to be well-prepared for 100% remote learning, because that is very likely where we're going to end up come flu season. So I know, I, I don't want, I don't want the, an adoption of this plan to, to be the school board's blessing that we're all ready to go back into school, because I don't see it that way. But again, I'm okay with tabling it, but I, I don't see what the plan is for that. Like, did we, do we come back in two days? Do we get to have more input? We're turning this into a workshop somewhat, and it was meant to be sort of an up or down. And you know.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yep. Well, thank you for that, Hope, and everyone else. And it sounds like the consensus is to go ahead and vote, that it's general enough and that and that all we're doing is giving the administration the go-ahead to keep, keep moving forward with their plans, and it's not about specifics. I'd like to hear from Laura as well, before we make that final decision. Laura? Would you like to?
Am I still unmuted? I thought I, I was sorry, I thought I already said to, yes, I agree that we are voting on the general plan. And giving the administration committee, you know, process to move forward in their planning.
Okay. All right. All right, so I have lost my little sheer. So then for the vote, can we just review? I know Phil mentioned it a moment ago. Can we just review it for consideration to a plan for fall reopening of school? Heather Altenberg is a yay. Kimberly Carr.
Yay.
Phil Saucier.
Yay.
Elizabeth Seifries.
Yay.
Nasser Shear.
Yeah.
Hope Straw.
Yay.
And Laura DiNino.
Yay.
Okay. I think we will table the policies for tonight. And instead of going through each individual board, if you have a problem with that, I'll, if you we table those. Donna, go ahead.
Well, I think the purpose of this, Hope, correct me if I'm wrong, but was just to share these policies. We are under a time crunch because the law changes as of August 14th. So we wanted, I think we wanted to share these with the board and possibly be ready to vote at the next meeting.
I can talk really fast.
Okay.
Okay. And Kathy, I mentioned you discussing it, but I don't think we need to go into great detail. Essentially, there has been actual changes to the federal level, Title IX regulations that we've been waiting for, for several years now, and they finally become law. And they've been, school districts have to have new policies and procedures in place effective August 14th. So we're in a time crunch. What you're seeing in the package tonight are the sample policies that have been developed by the Maine School Management Association. There are very little change from our existing policies, and it's policies AC and ACAa and ACAB, which are our anti-discrimination policy and the sexual harassment and harassment policies. And so what I'd like you all to do is take a look at the changes. Essentially, they got a little bit, a fair amount more clear on the definitions of sexual harassment. There's Title IX harassment, and then there's main law harassment. I'm hoping we can have a policy meeting between now and the next business meeting. Any public input would be appreciated at that meeting, and then we can vote to adopt at the next meeting so we can be in compliance come start of school. Any questions?
Thank you for that update.
Thanks, Hope.
Yep. So the final item, agenda, consideration to adjourn. May I have a motion, please?
I move, I move re-adjourn.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Heather Altenberg is a yay. Kimberly Carr.
Yay.
Phil Saucier.
Yeah.
Elizabeth Seifries.
Yay.
Nasser Shear. I think I heard a yay. Laura DiNino.
Yay.
Great. That concludes the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your time, for your thoughtfulness, for your care. These are very decisions that have been appreciated, everybody's. I hope you have a great evening. Thank you.
Night.
Night.